The public hearings portion of the county commission meeting. And we have first up. We have the second and final public hearing for adoption, and I have some language I'm supposed to read, am I right?
You are correct, sir.
So, this is the second and final public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, 2021, final budget. September the 29th, 6:00 PM, Leon County Courthouse. So this is the second and final of the required public hearings on the Leon County budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. We have already heard from citizens who have called in wishing to speak on the budget and millage issue, millage rates. We have one speaker, do we have one speaker?
We do.
Okay, now the county administrator, well, so before we start reading this, then we want to do the one speaker. Okay, we do have one speaker, I apologize, I got a little bit ahead of myself, so why don't we go ahead?
Sure.
Bring them up.
Mr. Chairman, the one speaker is Sierra Bush Restor.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, go ahead.
Um, I yield my time, thank you.
Okay. So that was our one speaker, I'll reread this, this is the second and the final of the required public hearings of Leon County budget for fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021. We have already heard from citizens who have called in wishing to speak on the budget and the millage rates. Now, the county administrator Vincent Long will read the millage rate into the public record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed aggregate millage rate is 8.8144 mils, which is 1.59% over the aggregate rollback millage rate of 8.6768 mils. Agglorant revenues will increase due to an upturn in property values and with use to support the following. Enhance support of law enforcement and public safety, including additional technology and support personnel. Sustaining an elevated level of countywide service delivery. Sound fiscal planning to avoid increases in fire services fees, EMS, and solid waste. Continued community investment in our parks, greenways, roads, and sidewalks. Commissioners, you have provided the necessary guidance during the development of tentative budget, and all the direction provided in the various agendas, workshops during the budget process have been included in the final FY 21 budget. However, if you still desire, staff is prepared to provide a brief presentation on the budget. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, discussions, anybody? Okay, yes, sir.
Chairman, I move options, options one, two, three, and four.
With, Mr. Commissioner Proctor, I tell you what, let me make this, let me read the little language here, we did, we have to, by statute, we have to take them one at a time, okay, but you, you've been at this stance more than most of us, so I'll let you take the lead. Florida statute requires the board to address the millage rate before addressing each budget. The board must vote on each millage rate and budget separately. I will now entertain the following motions, and I'll read it, and if somebody wants to make that motion. Adopt via the attached resolution, the fiscal year, the final fiscal year 2020, 2021, countywide millage rate of 8.3144 mils.
So move, Mr. Chairman, and adoption of 8.3144 mil.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Dozier, it looked like, I saw her hand go up. Is there discussion on this? Okay, commissioners, all in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, the second motion, adopt via the attached resolution, the final fiscal year 2020, 2021, countywide budget.
So move, Mr. Chairman, we adopt the countywide budget for 2021.
We have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Perfect, motion carries unanimously. Third is, adopt via the attached resolution, the final fiscal year 2020, 2021, emergency medical services, MSTU millage rate of 0.5000 mils. I have a motion from Commissioner Dozier, and a second from Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion as signified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think we got 7-0, and the last part is adopt via attached resolution, the fiscal, the final fiscal year 2020, 2021, emergency medical services, MSTU budget. I have a motion from Commissioner Lindley, I'm reading lips to know that, and is there a second from Commissioner Maddox? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Great, I would also like to point out, well, my hat's off to staff for the work that this, the document that we, what we just finished is a compilation of a year-long process that really, as most of y'all are well aware of, doesn't end. There's not a meeting that oftentimes doesn't go by where we don't have some chance to make input and things like that, so thank you for your patience, thank you for putting that together. Okay, next up on the public hearings.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman, Agenda Item 21 seeks the board's approval of the county to transfer the Jack Voss Land and Boat Land and Associated Entry Road, including all future maintenance and capital costs to the state of Florida and no cost to the county. To effectuate this transaction, the item requests the board to conduct the first and only public hearing to adopt the proposed resolution. This property lies completely within the state park, commissioners, and this would provide a mutual benefit to the county and to the state.
Any speakers?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner Maddox, wait, by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Proctor, Commissioner Proctor, okay, so the motion by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Proctor. Any, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously, next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Item Number 22 of public hearing, it's required by Florida statutes to consider proposed resolution adopting an inventory list for county-owned properties deemed appropriate for affordable housing, in accordance with the appropriate section of the statutes as referenced in the agenda item. Commissioners, upon your approval, we have a streamlined policy which provides for the availability of these properties for affordable housing through formalized agreements with our HFA, as well as the TALCIE Lenders Consortium who administers our community land trust. And upon your approval, we will be doing that, and we have no speakers on the panel.
Commissioners.
So, Mr. Chairman, is this, is this item, and I'm appreciative for this compilation, is this item going to be worked shop, and I, like I recall Commissioner Dozier, you know, somewhere back in the spring or another, we talked about an affordable housing, our housing workshop. Vince, is this kind of, we get a chance to explore, not tonight, but maybe later, the dynamics of accessing these properties, and how do we infuse these properties into the mainstream of the public for their attainment for affordable housing?
Yeah, go ahead, two parts to that question, Commissioner Proctor. Yes, we do have that workshop scheduled already for an upcoming meeting, it escapes me now, but it's, it's like your next workshop, or the one after that. And, and, and please note that upon your approval tonight, as I mentioned, these properties don't sit around in any way, they go directly to our affordable housing partners in the HFA and in our community land trust, so that we can get them turned into affordable units just as quickly as possible. And upon your direction tonight, we will be doing that, but yes, your workshop is scheduled.
Okay, and this will be brought back, included in that workshop and all of that, for affordable housing?
Yes, we'll provide all this information, yes, sir.
Okay, very good, thank you, Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Dozier, you wanted to speak on this?
Um, actually, thanks Commissioner Proctor for your questions. This is one more good move with affordable housing, but I guess I did want to recognize, there was an item on consent that I decided not to pull. It was about the Southwood Seventh Amendment, and it did strike me in that document that there was some reflection on the affordable housing policies with the city, payments made in lieu of housing, and I just wanted to mention here, Mr. County Administrator, that we've taken a lot of steps in recent years with the land trust, with what you just articulated, with the inventory, and I would like to have an update on where we stand with city and county policies, the Affordable Housing Work Group, everything we've done, it's been my impression that we were working in tandem with the city on that, and it seems like we've been doing well. I, I think it would just be appropriate in that workshop to get a full scope of those policies. You may have already been planning to do that, you're nodding, does that work for you?
Yes, and we were planning on that, but, but absolutely, we will do that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Dozier, we need somebody to move to?
Yes, sir, I, I apologize, I will move staff recommendation, option one, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Minor seconded, any other discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you, next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Item Number 23, Commissioners, request the board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider ordinance enabling, and enabling resolution adding a county commissioner to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, or the AHAC, as required by the newly adopted state law, and approve the associated revisions to the board policy to reflect this. This item, again, seeks a, a full appointment of one county commissioner to serve on the AHAC, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it off to you to facilitate the board's association.
All right, Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate staff's bringing this to us, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Maddox, if he's open and willing to serve on this particular board for affordable housing, and I move the adoption of this ordinance and, and place, recommend that we place Commissioner Maddox to be our first commissioner serving on Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
I would second that, yeah. Are you good with that, Commissioner Maddox?
Cool.
Okay. Any discussion? We could talk about the candidate here if you want to. Any objections? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously, I think, so, okay, I think that's public hearings. Okay, so, back to where we left off, which would be, we got a big chunk of Item Number 24 knocked off, but I think we need to finish the discussion relative to track and field and testing and spectators, that was the piece that we carved out, and Commissioner Dozier, thank you, because now that I look at it, you're right, this was, there were too many moving parts, and it was hard to kind of come up something together, so, I would just tell you my feeling, I would like very much to figure out, certainly from a spectator standpoint, how we can work with the groups to make sure that people can come see, if it gets unwieldy, we could change this, but I'm also concerned about out-of-town groups that have a testing requirement, are there some screening things that we could do, and I'm just, I, I don't know what the answer is, other than I just don't want to keep some of these teams from competing, but that's my two cents. Yes, sir, Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, I want to let this conversation play out, because here's the thing, if we, I mean, we don't necessarily have to take action tonight, I don't want to put a motion out there that's going to fail either, so, if it's one of those things to where, where through conversation, the board doesn't feel necessary to move in the way of moving towards just the screening versus the test, testing, then I'm not sure I want to make that motion, but I do want to, I do want to hear the conversation out from the board to see where everybody is on it, to see if we can give it a go. That was my comment, thank you.
I have nobody up to speak. Commissioner Dozier, oh, I'm sorry, I did not see you, okay, Commissioner Dozier.
I was, I was looking for other comments from the board, before I jumped in here, as I said, I, I have got a lot of questions and a lot more suggestions on our last item than I do on this item. So I'm going to start at the last conversation I had today with a coach from Lincoln High, who made some really excellent points about our local high school students having access and the testing requirements that may be cost prohibitive if they can't get a free test very quickly. So, a comment I made earlier was, if there are limitations on some of the testing options we already have at Bragg and other places, I think we could ask, you know, FSU and TMH if there is community capacity in their testing that could support some of these local students. Of course, that doesn't address the question of students coming from outside our community. I'm going to put a pin in that for a second. The other point of the spectators, I am certainly not in a place where we could just, I think we should open the door to any number of spectators. It has been suggested that one parent per participant for high school races would be appropriate, and I would be willing to consider that. I mentioned those two things because it kind of fits in the same category, from my perspective, as the youth sports, when, to Commissioner Jackson's excellent points earlier, that for a lot of young people in the community, there may have been a struggle with getting enough money to have appropriate equipment, getting enough money to travel to meets in the past, and now we're adding on costs for other things, that, that does resonate with me, because these kids, particularly the high school kids who may try to qualify for scholarships and others, should have access. If there's a way we can mitigate that impact, that would be acceptable to me. On the other hand, question about testing requirements for high school events, for those coming into the community who have to travel here from outside, this one is baffling to me. It is not in line with how Leon County Schools is operating, our own sports teams, it, I, I think I just have to reference, and I'm going to conclude here, Mr. Chair, because I want to hear from others, when we took this up on the 15th, I voted against cross-country, but said, I, I really wanted to talk more about youth sports, I was struggling with that one, and I really couldn't see how we could approve a large gathering, yes, I understand the CDC, others say running in cross-country is not as high risk as playing baseball, but still, local kids playing ball at chairs versus 1,200 runners and coaches and everyone else and people traveling to our community, it's not just about the guidelines we put in place for the event day, those are people who are coming in, staying in our community, going to restaurants, that's a whole lot more exposure if we start talking about public health. So to start limiting our guidelines for that group coming in from outside, I have not heard any justification that, that seems like it's in line with our public health guidance, and is in a real slippery slope, so I, I do need to hear more. If we can address the local kids, I'd be open to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, so, in the planning for inter-county competitions, we made a commitment to not travel outside of Leon County, and when I say we, because I'm part of the bigger team, I guess, so if we made that commitment, we know that we have policies in place in our local schools, both from K all the way through 12, that have greatly contributed to the lack of a outbreak. I think it's a reasonable suggestion and a reasonable, I guess, mandate or requirement that minimally we have some sort of either extensive screening process or prior test. I would, I had asked this question from Claudia, as well as the county administrator during briefing, each of the other 66 counties have some sort of free or available testing center or, or central location. Here in Leon, we have several, so I don't know that, you know, I would think that our, our coaches here in Leon have been extremely careful, if you just look at the number of games that have been, football games and volleyball matches that have been lost to contact tracing, it's taken very serious in Leon County. I don't know that that same fidelity is being practiced in other counties, I think the only way that we can ensure it as a board is to have some sort of minimal, I guess, benchmark for the runners to, runners and coaches to reach, as far as that's concerned. I would agree with Commissioner Dozier, I didn't know you were such an athlete and understander of all things sports, but the contact sports, the contact sports, Vince, remind me, contact sports, both baseball and football are considered contact sports, and running is not, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're talking about, you're talking about running outside, a mask at the beginning of the race, and a mask put on at the end of the race, which is going to be difficult for some of these kids that run really fast, because their first inclination is to puke when they cross the finish line, but anyways, not to digress, there's a lot of things in place for these meets already, and that they're outside and they're requiring mask. I just want to make sure that the folks coming in from other counties and districts are doing it, as, as Commissioner Proctor so eloquently put it, we're doing, we do it right and do it tight here in Leon, but we don't know what other districts are doing. And then just to, to address the correspondence that we got from the FHSAA, Madam Attorney, in the contents of that correspondence, it was mentioned that if this testing procedure were in place for the FHSAA football championships, that they would look at an alternative location. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but under a lease agreement, the Capitol, or Dean Cox Field, God bless you, Coach Cox, at Capitol Stadium, is actually under lease to the Leon County School Board, and they would hold the, I guess, the enforcement policies and procedures over that facility if we were to indeed host those FHSAA football championships. Am I correct, Madam Attorney?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yes, you're, you're correct, Commissioner Jackson, the county does own that property, but it leases it to the school board, which is fully responsible for operating it and maintaining it, under the same rationale that the emergency ordinance for face coverage does not apply, the school district property would also apply to that leased property.
Right, and see, that's different than the ARP, in my opinion, it's different than the ARP, which kind of basically falls back at the feet of the county, and what measures and what guidelines we have in place. So I want to hear what people have to say, I'm certainly open to inviting these runners in and having something that moves back towards active participation, but if we as a county and as a school board, you know, if we're participating in only inter-county or inter-district competitions, I don't know that it makes a whole lot of sense not to have some sort of guideline or procedure in place. Sorry to take up so much time, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good comments, yeah, Commissioner Maddox, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Jackson, so as I, as I understand it, Madam Attorney, what you're saying here is that, in order to change the, the piece about Cox Stadium itself, that would be in the hands of the school board, not the county commission, even though we own the property, because we've leased out the stadium to them, correct? Okay, so we're only concerned now specifically with ARP and cross-country. I'll tell you what, I'm taking a shot in the dark, I make a motion that we, specifically, that we, and I'm willing to make amendments if, if there's any to come, that we ask for screenings instead of testing at ARP for our cross-country events, that is my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, let me ask, I'll second that for discussion, Commissioner Maddox, but I have a question on clarification, when you say screening versus testing, is that athletes and spectators, or is that just athletes?
Athletes and spectators, sir.
And everybody, right, everybody shows up, right?
Everybody, yes, sir.
Right, okay, okay, I would second that, yeah, Commissioner Jackson, and then Commissioner Proctor.
Yeah, Commissioner Maddox, would you be willing to accept guidelines similar to, and that are followed by our local school board, which does daily temperature checks as well as wellness checks, and the, the actual, the actual cutoff for that is a temperature of 100 or higher, and I know that's, I know that's a matter of the attorney and the administrator doing a whole lot of work to see what other folks are doing, but I know that that has been kind of the standard, and it had, and, and, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think that is what the standard testing was, so, yeah, I'm good, I mean, standard screening was, so I'm good with that.
Cool, thanks.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Proctor, followed by Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioners, I've said a couple months ago that I support that cross-country event.
Okay, Commissioner Dozier?
I, I guess I just, if I'm hearing this right, we're going to eliminate all the testing requirements and any restrictions on spectators, or did I miss something there?
If I understood the motion, it, from Commissioner Maddox, it was screening, not testing, for all the athletes, all the spectators, all the coaches, anybody who shows up, basically, at ARP. Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioners, just to remind, remind you in case this is helpful to you, as you recall, we, we do not have, for all of our events now, we have no testing requirements in place except for our large statewide meets, and those are the, and, but, and so, any of our local meets, we do not have testing requirements currently, but we also do not have spectators, so, and we do not allow spectators for our local events or our large events. So I, I think if, if, I know he's just trying to provide clarification for the board and for Commissioner Dozier there, that you may want your, whatever motion to address those things, so again, we are not requiring testing for our local events, we're only requiring testing for our statewide, our major events, and we are not allowing spectators currently at any event based on your most recent actions.
So, so my motion, Mr. Chair, would, would be for the local to mirror that of the large event as well.
Large events.
You want no spectators.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me back up, I'm talking about as far as the testing is concerned, for the local to mirror the large event in there, in, in that we're just screening. Now, I didn't address, I did not address spectators at all, I'm willing to entertain motions, entertain amendments when it comes to that piece, but I'm specifically speaking to the, to screening instead of testing, testing for large events, to mirror that of what we have for local events.
On point, so you would allow spectators?
He said he didn't address spectators.
Okay.
I did not address it, I'm willing to put it, I'm willing to add it as a part of the motion, giving commission discussion.
I, I'll, I'll jump in, I spoke to somebody this weekend that went to a soccer tournament somewhere in central Florida as a grandparent of a child, and they said, they spread us out in the field, so there was And they said they spread us out in the field, so there was no chance we were interacting. And they temperature checked everybody before they walked in the door. There was just kind of a standard, you know, that was their level of screening, so to speak, for the spectators. So.
Mr. Chair, can you get back to my question for a second?
Absolutely, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I mean, I, I've heard the same thing from parents who have gone to play travel baseball and other things. It is a very different environment from my perspective to have a large statewide race with spectators spread out. I mean, they, we only have one area where the spec, I mean, they're walking through the woods out of the cross-country track, everything like that. I cannot see an open-ended spectator, how, how we could ever govern that with social distancing in the same way you might in other places. We have not had the time to talk through this, and I think we're missing one huge piece here. I'm just going to reiterate it, that for the large statewide events, we are asking people to travel here and they're going to bring multiple parents and other, you know, coaches. There's going to be a much different impact on our community. I'm not saying it can't happen. I'm not saying it hasn't happened around the state. But we keep talking about the regulations of testing or screening. This is a much bigger impact on our community than we're discussing. So I think that should be said. Beyond that, screening can help, but without any testing requirements for these large statewide events, as the county administrator just said, that gets into a different territory for me. And I cannot support a change for those large events. So, Mr. County Administrator, what I wanted to go back and clarify, and I don't have the item from the 15th of September pulled up in front of me. I know you had a schedule of cross-country meets through the fall. So what I heard about our local high school students, and I think it was a pre-qualifying event this weekend, what you just articulated, the testing requirements for only large state meets, not for local, how does that play out this weekend? I mean, these, this is considered a local event or this is considered a state event?
We're, we're checking on that. Commissioner, I, I don't know right off the top of my head if it was a statewide meet. Or if, I can answer it this way. If it was a statewide meet, then there was not testing and there was just screening.
You mean if it was a statewide meet?
If it was not a statewide, yes, yeah. If it was, if it was, if it was not a statewide meet, then there was no testing. There was just screening.
Okay. So I'm going to say this. If, if the, the motion on the floor, what I'm hearing is, is pertaining to the large statewide meets, I can't support that. Haven't heard enough of how we're going to protect our community. And I think it is contrary to our, our Phase Two guidelines and everything we talked about a little while ago for a long time. On the other hand, if we could take up a motion after this, if there is some way to support local Leon County high school students, even if it was in our four-county region, and help address testing needs if they were attending one of those statewide events, I'd entertain something like that to help our kids participate. But it sounds like if this weekend is not a statewide event, then our local high school kids should be able to have access. So that is a question I would love to know the answer about, but, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, yeah, clarification just in, yes, it is statewide. Yes, it does require tests currently.
So anyway, I'll just, I'll say it a third time, Mr. Chair. If we could get into the, this motion, Commissioner Maddox, I don't know what the solution is, but we have a financial challenge for our local kids having access to testing. And it's something that we could handle directly here in Leon County. I, I think to Commissioner Jackson's point, other counties have free testing available. And I really don't understand why this is so onerous. It needs to be fleshed out more and maybe it comes back at the next meeting. But at this point, I can't support the motion on the table. Thank you.
All right, let me, let me take a stab at this, just to keep the conversation going. I think we're looking at a couple of different factors here. One is local, in our area, kids, I think all of us, at least what I'm hearing is, are comfortable for all the guidelines the schools have put in place to have local meets be done. And I would even offer, even with spectators, with some parameters. Maybe we knock that off and then we come back and we talk about the statewide meets so that we can carve, that we can take this in sec, sec, does that make sense? Commissioner Maddox, it's your, it's your motion. I'm just looking for a way to move the ball here.
In respect of what you've asked, what I would, what I'd be willing to do is send my motion and make the motion for local events specifically, testing of spectators, athletes and coaches. Allowing spectators with perimeters in place that they actually respect the six-foot thing, a six-foot distance barrier we got in place, as well as mask-wearing at our, at our facility. That's for the local. I'll, I'll address the, the, I'm sorry, I'll address the statewide after we've discussed this motion.
Why don't we use discretion, yeah, I would say. All right, to clarify, you said testing, I'm guessing you meant screening.
I'm sorry, screening, screening.
That's okay. And then the only other thing I would ask is, I, I would maybe offer staff some ability, I mean, let's face it, if it gets to a point, some parameters of size. If, if they get 5,000 people.
We need to know upfront. We need to know upfront. Do you want to limit it? Do you not want to limit it? If you. I wouldn't. I'd limit it to one, one parent or two parents.
Limitation to one parent, limitation.
Two parents per, two, two parents per athlete. What's that? You said one?
I mean, I would, I mean, if a mom and dad wants to go, I, I, I'll tell you what, we'll just go for the sake of, we'll just go for one parent.
Okay, one parent. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Dozier.
I have heard, and I'm, I'm sure it's not universal. I'm sure there are plenty of people who would want full spectators or two parents. But I have heard from, again, coaches and others involved, that at least one parent per participant would be beneficial to them. If we have a race of 1,200 and we add two parents per, I mean, we're getting into really large numbers there. We're already going to be a large number. So I can, if it's one parent, thank you.
So your motion is one parent, right? Commissioner Maddox, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, and I would second, I'd hold my second with that. So the motion is local, screening, one parent per child, social distancing, and, and a limit on number at some point. I mean, clearly.
One parent.
That's the, okay, but there's not a total grant, okay, all right. Any discussion about that? Let's, let's, if it's okay with the body, let's dispose of that and then we'll move back into the other part. I think there are two different issues here. All right, all in favor of the motion as made by Commissioner Maddox, which I seconded, signify by saying aye, aye? Okay, I got, it looks like everybody on board. Thank you. Okay, nice motion, Commissioner Maddox. Now, let's talk a little bit about how we deal with some of the statewide. Commissioner Maddox.
Again, I'll take a shot in the dark and make the same motion for statewide meets as well. That's my motion.
Okay, so the similar motion then with screening, one parent per child. Yeah, Commissioner Proctor, you seconding that? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, this is, this works. All right, all in favor of the motion as made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Proctor, signify by saying aye, aye? Opposition? I look, okay, Commissioner, two, okay, we're five-two, it looks like, if I counted right. Okay, all right. Thank you. Nice job, Commissioner Maddox. That was well done. Okay, I think, it's worth repeating though, too, embedded in the first motion before we broke was continuation of the mask mandate. I know most of us have gotten, as Commissioner Minor pointed out, a lot of emails with people that are worried. So the ma, mask mandate stays in place as part of the motion before we went to public hearing. So having said that, it's yours, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are back on the agenda. And item number 13, Commissioners, is status report, recommended enhancements to the Leon Cares program. This item provides status report on the expenditure plan approved by the board at the July 14th meeting and presents recommended enhancements to the Leon Cares Individual Assistance Program, as well as a Small Business Assistance Program, as well as modifications the board may wish to consider, other modifications. Commissioners, we had originally intended to bring you this update, as you may recall, in October, in anticipation of Congress approving additional coronavirus relief bills that may have extended deadlines for the spending of the Cares funding and possibly allowed for Cares funding to offset local revenue losses. However, as you all know, Congress has not approved an extension or made any modifications as of today. The Cares funding must be spent, again, by December 30th, 2020, or funding will be required to be returned to the Treasury. Commissioners, through the first month, and again, it's hard to imagine it's only been a little over a month, for the Cares program, we have awarded millions of dollars in grants to hundreds of businesses, individuals and human services agencies. We've funded 1.5 million in meals to address food insecurity. We've funded almost a dozen mobile testing events so far. Hired dozens of new contact tracers and school health monitors. However, staff is recommending several enhancements for the streamline of these programs, simplify the application process and expedite funding assistance to meet the community's greatest needs resulting from a pandemic. These enhancements, Commissioners, are based on best practices being implemented around the state and with recommendations from Ernst &amp; Young. I'll quickly go over the major recommended enhancements for both the individual and the Small Business Assistance Program and conclude with some additional recommendations. Commissioners, first on the Individual Assistance Program. The recommended enhancements expand eligibility from 80% of AMI, average median income, to 120% of AMI, and increase the maximum award from 3,000 to 5,000. Again, anyone that has already been awarded will not need to reapply. They will simply be eligible to receive the additional funding based on need. Again, this program is for individuals needing assistance with rent, mortgage and utilities. Second, Commissioners, for Small Business Assistance, the grant award is made up of two parts. As you know, a baseline award as well as several supplemental categories. The baseline awards have all been increased or with the maximum now being 12,050. That's our recommendation. The supplemental awards are also recommended to increase with the hardest hit in the MWSB categories going to $10,000 each, and the rebounding businesses going to 5,000, again, as a supplemental award. Under the, the current program, the maximum total that any small business can receive is $8,500. This would bring it to 37,500. So a very significant amount, still in line with other counties, still consistent with U.S. Treasury guidance and, and, and consistent with our recommendations from Ernst &amp; Young as well. The item also lays out additional modifications to further streamline the small business award process. In addition, Commissioners, it's difficult to project the level of demand that each of our county Cares programs will experience prior to the December 30th deadline. And because of that, the final recommendation authorizes the county administrator to allocate and spend the reserve and replenishment account to move funding between programs as may be needed. Over the next several months, Commissioners, we will work closely with our community partners in addressing highest community needs and provide funding as needed as well in the categories already approved by the board. In addition to supporting these programs, in the event that any free testing sites are closed, we can move quickly to use these reserve accounts to pay for additional testing. Again, as, as previously approved by the board. Finally, Commissioners, there's one additional policy item here that I've, I've mentioned. Obviously, we talked a lot about it in our briefings, which could further reduce the time and simplify the process of making payments for the Individual Assistance Program. And that is, Commissioners, currently in Individual Assistance, we're making payments directly to landlords. Again, we set this program up intentionally with that in mind to make those payments to landlord, landlords, mortgage companies and utility providers. While this has been successful, the process has several complications and is, is time-consuming when involving the landlords, mortgage companies and utility providers. And, and I should say the utility providers less so. But this approach is consistent with the vast majority of counties in Florida, and it provides a significant benefit in that it ensures that this funding is being used for the intended purposes, which is to keep people in their homes and with basic utilities. However, there are few counties, Commissioners, making payments directly to individuals. And this reduces the complexity of the process, the time it takes to issue payments. However, in, in paying individuals directly, there is no assurance that funding will be used for the intended purpose of keeping people in their homes. But these are policy choices that the board can make, and there have been counties that have made that choice too intentionally. So both approaches, again, Commissioners, are consistent with U.S. Treasury guidance. In conclusion, staff is recommending options one through three and seeking your, your guidance on option four, which again, I just discussed, and which addresses the payments to individual assistance being made to either the individuals or to the mortgage landlords or utility providers. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Minor followed by Lindley, I think. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple, a couple of questions and then a motion at the end. Mr. County Administrator, you said that the, for the individual Leon Cares program, individuals that have already applied and received a check don't need to reapply, but they still need to come back and justify additional need in order to get the additional dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we will have a whole system set up to, to allow for them to do that with as, as, as simply and easily as we can.
Okay, great. And then two, two questions on the business, the business Leon Cares program. Let's say that, let's say that these, these motions, these options are approved and, and Leon Cares is expanded for businesses. For businesses that have already applied and received, and have received a check, what will happen in this case? Will they automatically have another check sent to them for the difference in additional funds?
Yes, the businesses that have, that will automatically receive the delta.
And so if a business has already applied and are awaiting results of the application, that automatically the changes will become in effect and that check will be cut with the new amounts, correct?
That is, that is correct.
For, for the business program, for, for the, the changes in the documentation required in facilitating the application process, do you believe that these changes will, obviously, facilitate the application process? But do you think they do so jeopardizing any of our obligation in terms of making sure taxpayers' monies accountably are basically used with accountability?
Right, we, we work closely, hand in hand with Ernst &amp; Young to ensure that that does not happen, that we're in full compliance.
So, so the changes that we're proposing here are very helpful. They, they basically expand the eligibility criteria. They facilitate the application process, make it go more quickly, but without sacrificing any of the controls that we need to make sure that taxpayer dollars are being spent in the right way.
Correct.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. On, on that, I'd, I'd like to move to approve option one, two and three. And then I'd like to have some discussion with the rest of the board on option four. But for now, I'd like to have a motion for options one, two and three.
Okay, I got a second from Commissioner Proctor. And I, yeah, and Commissioner Lindley, then Maddox, then Dozier. Commissioner Lindley, you're up.
Thanks, Commissioner Minor. I support that, although I would like to add option four. I actually, early on, felt was kind of an untrusting approach to send the payments directly to the rent or landlord, mortgage holder or utility. And I like very much the idea of sending the money directly to the individuals. I am assuming there might be a few people who would get the money and wouldn't pay for the roof over their head or their utilities. But I would think that we can monitor that fairly closely. And in any case, the money that goes directly to them will be going back into our local economy, which is something very useful, I think. I also appreciate having the lightest touch possible in, in doing this second round. possible in doing this second round. So if someone demonstrated their need earlier, now I gather that the remaining check would go straight to them, even though the first part went to their mortgage holder or rent landlord or utilities. So I would like to go ahead. I know we're getting assistance. We heard earlier from the Capital City Chamber is helping with this. The Urban League is helping to make sure people are getting the assistance they need, hoping that the applications are as simple as possible. Clear. So I would like to go ahead and just, I guess that'd sort of be amending your motion to include option four.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lindley, I would accept that amendment, but I would, if you'll allow me to edit that just a bit, I'd like to make sure that any future dispersments go out that go directly to the individual, come with a commitment from that individual to use it on mortgage, rent, or utilities, and basically notify them that they could be selected for an audit, and that if that audit or some other determination shows that they did not spend those funds on those spending categories, that we would reserve the right to ask for that money back. And the reason why I'd like to make that tweak is because I want to make sure that, I mean, this is all taxpayer dollars, and I know we are all very good stewards, I want to be very good stewards of that, even though it's a different, you know, it's a federal government, not us, we still are entrusted with that, and I just, I want to make sure that those taxpayer-funded grants are going for the intended purpose.
I think it's more than a tweak, if I may. I kind of like to hear from the county attorney on that. I understand what you're saying, although I do think the first federal stimulus checks went to people to spend to get the money back into the economy, spending it however they chose, which I assume in part could have been rent, mortgage, or utilities. I would like to hear from the county attorney if we can actually make such a requirement that, I mean, I guess it's a pledge, sort of.
Go ahead.
How enforceable would that be?
Thank you. Yes, in fact, we can condition receipt of those funds in the way that Commissioner Minor has outlined, and we've already created a form to do so, if that's the county commission's desire.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm comfortable with that, if that's the desire of the Board. I don't think it's necessary, but I would not, you know, hold up the motion because of that.
Mr. Chair, can I drop you off?
Yeah, Commissioner Maddox, you're up.
I've got a laundry list of things I want to talk about, but I want to start with this, with this item number four and the stipulations or the limitations that Commissioner Minor placed around it. I read, had the opportunity very quickly to read through the Fritztown cap statement that they sent out to some of us, if not all of us, and one of the things that they said in it that I thought made a lot of sense was childcare and healthcare costs as an addition to the mortgage, rent, utility piece there to be covered. If we're going to make it where it's specifically about a few things, I think childcare and healthcare costs are appropriate to add to that list if the maker of the motion will consider so for item number four.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Maddox, I would. I agree with you. I think those are very, those are essential expenditures.
Thank you.
I would accept that.
Thank you, sir. So let's dig a little deeper, specifically to the $3,000 piece that we're talking about, the ineligible individuals. This part really touched me in what they had to say. On fixed income or no documented income loss, so the elderly, they can't document an income loss, and technically, they're ineligible for these monies. But that doesn't mean that their expenses didn't increase. I'm trying to see if there's a way that we can at least make some kind of, give some kind of leeway to those who are on fixed income or have no documented income loss in special cases, especially, like I said, looking at the elderly, looking at those who may be in situations where they're on governmental assistance of some kind and can't document any kind of loss. If we're already addressing that, let me know, but I'm trying to see if we're not, if we can make any kind of stipulations there.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you may recall, yes, we are a very popular program. We are covering, what's the number?
A million dollars.
Well, it's a million dollars. I know the dollar number, it's, yeah, but over 250 families currently through our contract with the Early Learning Coalition, and if, I certainly, under these options, have the ability that if demand is there to move additional dollars into that pot to cover childcare expenses, moving it into this Individual Assistance Program creates some issues for us relative to documentation, and monitoring the utilities and rent and mortgage is a lot easier for us to monitor through this, the way that we have the system set up. So I'm just offering that we certainly could serve even a greater number. We're meeting the need that are currently applying to the childcare program that we have in place, and I've got the ability if needed to move additional dollars there.
Okay, so that talks about the childcare and healthcare costs. I'm talking specifically about the ineligible individuals. Do we cover that, those on fixed income and no documented income loss?
Excuse me, I just need more clarification. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so if I have no documented income loss because I'm on fixed income, or let's say I don't have a job or something like that, and I apply for these dollars, technically, I'm not, I mean, from what I'm understanding from this letter, I'm not eligible for this pot of money. Is that correct? If it is correct, can we do something to address that, especially with the elderly who, again, may have increased expenses but not have a documented income loss because they're on fixed income?
In short, the U.S. Treasury requires that you have an impact from COVID, and we have various compliance checks that we do on that.
Understood, understood. Thank you for addressing that piece. The other piece, the $3,000, it says if, and this is something I hope we can deal with as well, not to exceed 3,000. So if, let's say I'm a homeowner and I owe $4,000 instead of three on my rental mortgage, I'm not eligible for this pot of money as well? Is that correct?
We just increased it to, I mean, if this goes through, the Board will increase it to 5,000.
So again, but if I'm not, if I owe more than five, then I'm not eligible?
It's a, it would be a maximum of five. You're eligible for a maximum of five.
You're eligible for a maximum of five, even if you owe six, is what I'm saying. So if, I'm not disqualified if I owe $6,000?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good, good. Just want to make sure, because that was an interview. And the last piece that I want to put on record here, Vince, we talked about during my briefing, I was talking, I had the opportunity to attend a workshop where it was stated that for the microloan program in particular, that the federal, the Fed's stance had changed in that if the money was given to an entity, if money was granted to an entity to loan out, that those monies could be reinvested back into that program versus being paid directly back to the Feds after December 31st. Is that correct? If that is correct, then I'd like for us to maybe put aside a little bit to see if we can get that going. If not, then let me know.
We are in direct contact with U.S. Treasury and Ernst &amp; Young on a, most days, a multiple time daily basis, and we're not aware of any new advisory that's come out related to that. We're not saying that it absolutely has not. We are not aware of that. Since we were not pursuing a microloan program based on the Board's previous direction, we're not aware of any guidance, new guidance related to that. We'd have to look into that.
I understand. Not to complicate the motion any more than what it already is. I'll let it go as is, but if you'll come back to me, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is take a shot, I don't know if I can, at some of the reserve dollars that we have in place to put those aside and give the county administrator the ability to use the rest to replenish programs, but put a piece, let's say, well, how much is in there, Commissioner, Mr. Administrator? I believe it's like five, six or seven?
I have a bit for you.
Is it five?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, okay. So to look at putting a piece of that aside to see if we could see what they're doing down in Miami-Dade area and other areas, and make sure for sure that that program is not viable because of the need to pay those monies back to the Fed, to the Feds. That would be my hope here, but I wanted to see, I guess if we dispense of the motion, then there is no more direction to give on the pot of money. But before I ask for the amendment, I'd like to know what others would think about the idea there, or maybe even taking that three and a half, since that's what we got left, and placing that aside for the opportunity to look at the microloan program. That is my, those are my comments, and thank you for all the clarifications on items that I brought up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I've got Commissioner Dozier followed by Commissioner Proctor. Let me weigh in, if you don't mind, Commissioner Dozier, real quick. I haven't had a chance just to kind of give you, I came into the meeting today thinking that I wouldn't, I wouldn't accept this if we put tagged item four on there. To me, it looks, it looked like on the face, a little reckless that we would give money out just outside of what we kind of framed this from originally. I'm willing to get there if there are some parameters like y'all have talked about that are some kind of, listen, if you just sign a pledge to say that's what you'll spend it on type of thing. I realize that's not a perfect world, but at least we're getting the money out, and if it manages to get it out faster. So I just wanted to state that's where I am. So Commissioner Dozier, and I apologize for jumping in front of you there.
Let me get over to the mute button. Thank you. Okay, so yes, there is a lot of moving pieces, and I just want to step back for a second and say thank you to our county staff, Mr. County Administrator, and county attorney, this and our partners, Second Harvest, Early Learning Coalition, 211 Big Bend, the chambers. I love the comment from Katrina earlier, offering some financial assistance, budgeting to folks, and helping them with the documentation. This has been an all-hands-on-deck approach, and it is remarkable, as you said, Mr. County Administrator, that we have done so much in such a short amount of time. So I applaud those efforts, and I think, I saw some statistic the other day about how much CARES Act money has actually been allocated to local communities. I can't remember the number. Maybe you have it, Mr. County Administrator, but it was really low, and it made me feel really good about our approach right now. So thank you for that. The options that are on the table, I can support that. I had just one suggestion, but I'm gonna first, Mr. Chair, make comments on some of the other suggestions that are already on the table. I like the discussion that Commissioner Lindley and Commissioner Minor had about option four. I think our first step in trying to have as tight of controls over this money, it's taxpayer money, whether it's federal, state, or local, was a good first move, but I think the flexibility doing direct payments is good. I could have gone either way on the audit. I think there's, there's some difficulties here for everyone, but I like the posture we're in. And for the healthcare and childcare, Commissioner Maddox, I appreciate a lot of the questions that you asked there, and just to add one, Mr. County Administrator, if there was a need for people to, for assistance for childcare costs, or even for those, say, who can't attend school in person, or, you know, just may need other assistance due to health issues, other things like that, so, you know, their child in, for daycare that simply can't go outside of the home, I'm going to stop with that analogy. I just wonder if there are other scenarios where some folks may need assistance with childcare support that is outside of the typical Early Learning Coalition approach and their typical program? And if ELC as a partner could help to expand the support for families or increase the income threshold, have there been any conversations like that? I think childcare is a critical issue, but I really do support our efforts to work with our partner, Early Learning Coalition. So have you all had conversations like that?
We have. In fact, we have other providers already engaged, from Salvation Army to Echo, to others who you don't normally associate with childcare, to our deep, our direct emergency assistance payment programs that we also have engaged on this, and we'd be happy to, since we have an existing contract with ELC, to revisit that with them and see if there's any need to expand, to address some of the issues that you brought up, Commissioner Dozier, and we would have the authority to pursue those.
Great. Okay, so, Ms. County Administrator, there's no way that I could have named all of the various partners, so thank you for mentioning Echo and Salvation Army as well. We do have an incredibly long list of partners, so that would satisfy my concern, but I'm actually gonna tie in another comment that I had. I am comfortable with option three, and, you know, we were given a very short amount of time to get this money out, and I think it is appropriate to let our county administrator execute agreements going forward, replenish funds with Second Harvest, with others if needed, for example. But I would like to see, I know you're already giving us an update, Mr. County Administrator, about just where we stand on CARES. When you get into these other agreements, or what that resolution might be with the ELC conversation, I'll use that example, I would, I don't know if this needs to be part of the motion, but I would like to see emails come to us at the very least, if not an update at commission meetings, maybe both, but emails, when you set up a new agreement, when you have a new program, highlight that for us so we're aware of what changes are being made. We can help you promote those programs. Does that need to be part of the motion, or?
No, not at all. We would do that regardless.
Fantastic. Okay, so again, Commissioner Maddox, good questions, I think, on the healthcare and other issues. I would like to see some of those programs expanded, but I think working through our existing partners is a good first step. The other thing that I wanted to address was not-for-profit employers. We have funding here for COVID relief programs from human service providers, those who are helping address the impact of the pandemic on our residents and our community, but we have not considered that the nonprofits in our community, and I got some numbers, I want to thank Institute for Nonprofit Excellence and Coka for helping me, you know, get some numbers on this. The employment for nonprofits in Leon County is about 22,000, and with resident employment, and this was based on 2019 numbers. Non-for-profits are businesses. They do employ a lot of folks, and the administrative costs, the overhead costs, they have lost revenue for fundraisers and other things. We've talked about this when we discussed the LEAN program with OEV way back when, maybe that was April, May. But I would like to propose expanding our small business loans to not-for-profit employers. So basically, it would be full-profit and not-for-profit employers that could demonstrate the loss based on the existing criteria in those programs and use the same rules that we had for the LEAN program. Mr. County Administrator, help me out on this. We were talking about this earlier today, or texting about it, that wouldn't allow, say, political committees to apply for these dollars. So we did have some restrictions, but I do feel strongly that So we did have some restrictions, but I do feel strongly that those nonprofits, their employers, and we need to do more than just the programs. We need to help them support and stay afloat because they're doing a service for our community. Last thing on this, it is beyond human service providers. This would be arts, culture, heritage, yes, but also those who work with the environment, with animal services, um, with sports. Um, there's a lot of different types of nonprofits outside of human services and arts and culture, and I'm speaking to all of those. Mr. County Administrator, did you sum that up correctly based on our conversation?
You did. I was just gonna add the part, and you came back and, and added it at the end, which was just to clarify, since, since you and I had discussed this and, and for the board was, uh, many of the commissioners may have been thinking, well, you know, didn't we already address this with nonprofits? But you made that clarification that uh we did, but those were direct human services providing uh non-for-profits. Um, and uh we set up a, a separate program from this uh for them. And so this would be to uh include um other uh nonprofits, um uh presumably not the human service providing nonprofits uh that fit into the categories that you talked about. Um, and um to include those exceptions that we had in the lean program, which, which included um excluding um uh professional associations and political um nonprofits and, and, and the like. So yes, thank you. That was the clarification I was gonna make.
And then, Mr. County Administrator, it really gets down to kind of C3s versus, 501(c)(3)'s versus other types of organizations. Is that right? Okay. Um, so, Mr. Chair, I'll pause here. I see Commissioner Lindley wants a question. Um, I would like to propose that as an amendment to the motion, but I'd love to hear comments from others as well. Thank you.
All right. I've got Commissioner Maddox, then Lindley, then Jackson. So I, I think Commissioner Maddox was teed up for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be quick. I just wanted to make sure, because I know we're talking about that childcare piece. Uh, the healthcare, I think Commissioner Minor accepted childcare and healthcare, and healthcare. Uh, but from what I understand, County Administrator, you were saying that we have partners that we deal with, with the childcare piece, correct? And you were saying that we could increase, increase the pots of money in, in which we, we, we give those for that, for that particular program?
That's correct, Commissioner.
But, 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 so let me ask you this question. If, if a, does a childcare provider have to be certified with those particular programs in order to get those monies? Meaning, meaning, okay, so, okay, so you said we could, we could do more with those partnerships, right?
They just have to be licensed by the state of Florida.
Okay, okay. So, given that being the case, I don't want to have, I, I don't know if I want to double dip there, because I, I think, so, so people will be able to pay through that pot, but then they'll also be able to pay through this pot if we open up the childcare on both ends, right?
That, that's correct. That's why we, we would recommend not doing that, yeah.
Right, right, right. Um, I, I would like to make an emotional, but given that being the case that there is some money there for childcare, I, I, I would be willing to go ahead and take that piece off and just deal specifically with the healthcare piece of it. Um, now that there's a clarification that there's a piece there for, for childcare to be paid. Uh, but I'll leave it to make an emotional on discretion on that.
It was Commissioner Proctor. This is Commissioner Minor's motion. Commissioner Proctor seconded.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I, I will make that amendment. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for uh, for clarifying that point, Mr. County Administrator. So right now, my motion is options one, two, and three, and four, um, with the qualifications I mentioned before about the reassurance uh to the recipient of these uh funds. Uh, make sure that, you know, they understand that they could be selected for audit. Uh, if it's determined through the audit or through other means that um they did not spend on the, on these categories, they might be asked for those funds back. And those categories being mortgage, rent, utilities, or healthcare.
All right. Commissioner Pro, Commissioner Proctor, are you okay with that?
Uh, yeah, but I'll caution Commissioner Minor. He's, he's, he's raising the bar for uh, and I think Commissioner Lindley was uh empathetically going in the right direction. And that is uh, we have businesses, all they have to do is fill out a form and say they made a good faith to find a minority. And we never go out to see if they actually got a minority, what's going on. All you got to do is fill a form, fill the box, and keep going. Um, if we're gonna, you know, make this a harassment program, and I just don't think we have enforcement, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable do, doing that. And I think that we have an honor system for our business people that come in to get a bid, and they say, I couldn't find nobody black. They check the box, we keep going. Yes, we couldn't. We don't even go see if they, if they look. So if you're confident with it, um, you know, I'm trying to get the money on the street. And the question was, what does our county administrator want from this board? What this board want is not for $1 to go back to Washington DC. So we're trying to broaden categories, increase money. Everybody here is paying their $750 a year for taxes, and we don't want the little bit we got to go back nowhere. So let's loosen up. Um, the micro loan is the only idea we got that will residually rotate and remain to help people once this money's been given, spent, and that's just it. I think that's a great idea that Commissioners put out the micro loan, because it has residual rotating value into the future. And I think the categories bit of uh transitioning from jail back to society, a reentry, um, if you can pay for childcare, what about the care for elder costs if you're paying for your parents to have a, a, a parent sitter, uh, those kinds of things? Do we have some money for um neighborhood and barn? Uh, can that be a category? Uh, and I wanted to ask also, what is the turnaround time, uh, Vince, when we are, people filling out the sheet of paper, how long does it take for this money to turn around and get into these people's hand? And I also like to know, is the documentation uh less for businesses than for individuals? Because there is something frightening, people not following through with the uh, in the calls that I get, when I ask people, is you fill out that sheet of paper? And it's always, well, 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 I'm gonna get to it, get to it. And I'm pondering, is it too complicated and all like that? I know your question was, do I maintain that second? And I say, yes, but those are other concerns that I'm, I just look like this, but I'm not, I'm not um completely, uh, but I just look like that. So those are the concerns I have.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So I've got everybody teed up here. I've got Commissioner Lindley, followed by Commissioner Jackson, followed by Commissioner Dozier, followed by Commissioner Minor. So Commissioner Lindley, you're up first.
Really quick, we're, it's not even on point. We're getting a whole lot of noise, really loud. I don't know if it's from the conference room. I would, I would really love to say that it was you or the County Administrator eating some candy, but that's just speculation. But just if we could all mute ourselves, I'm having a hard time hearing the comments over that crackling sound.
Well, I just, when I heard, Mr. Chairman, was that, Vince, did you say that the micro loan was a no-go?
And that, Mike, uh, Commissioner, uh, well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, that the, the micro loan we, we have, we've advised um in the past that based on the US Treasury guidance that it's not advisable. We are getting, uh, so as you asked Commissioner Proctor, we're getting real-time guidance from our auditors and our accountants and our compliance people from Ernst &amp; Young, uh, real-time. That is a bad idea. If, if the board wants to do it, uh, what I would recommend is that uh, a, and, and I'm not recommending this, but certainly we could bring you back an agenda item on October 13th, but we were not in a position to um, to advise the board uh, or to recommend uh micro loans. And, and if we do that, there was a piece thrown in for healthcare um at the time, which is also a question mark uh for us as well. We might have to um, to uh, to bring that back to you as well, because again, we're, we're not in a position to uh advise you um, uh, on, on either of those. But uh, in particular, the micro loan uh program, which we've been pretty explicit about from the beginning.
Okay, let's give everybody a shot here. Uh, Commissioner Lindley, you're up next. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, yeah, I definitely don't want to see the micro loan program into this. I think we're getting actually more complicated. And really, even if the healthcare piece comes into this, having this, you know, respectfully, having this pledge that people will spend the money in the right way, I really think, I, if they make a case for the losses that they've incurred and their need, I think that we need to be able to distribute this money to them. Uh, they will pay the expenses that are most critical because the, of their loss of income and their, the effects from COVID. Uh, this is no different than the original stimulus money will go into our economy. And I just think we're making it complicated. I don't know how we're gonna follow up on these pledges. Um, and if the person qualifies for this additional money up to $5,000, they can pay for caring for their elderly parents if they need that for that particular cause, or for whatever critical expenses they have. I just, um, I mean, if it's the will of the board to have this audit and this pledge of allegiance, I, I guess I would go along with it, but I really don't like it. Uh, I don't think it's necessary. Uh, and I think it just overly complicates what we're trying to do, which is get this money quickly as possible into our community, so we are not turning it back into the feds in about three or four, three more months. So um, I, I just, I, I don't want us to continue adding on what if, what if, and here's another thing, which just seems like we're kind of wandering into that land of one more idea, one more great idea. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I think uh the current plan kind of maximizes the uh greatest bang for our books. And um, uh, while I can understand the need for some sort of um, um reasoning or some sort of documentation on spending it where it's uh best spent, there's no way for us to kind of encompass exactly what um, um people um, um deem as most important. I certainly um could see it going either way on, I believe that was option four. Um, but I think that, that this plan um is well thought out, has um, uh, certain parameters and that uh, um, adding the micro loans take away um kind of the impact of, of, in my opinion, um, while I appreciate the opinions of others, kind of minimizes the impact that we can have on the um, the hardest hit. Under the current plan, it is a um distribution of funds that um people become eligible for that $5,000, and that is, uh, can go a long ways, a lot longer than some of the stuff we were doing with the SEDAR grants, as well as the other grants we were allowing for um, um, small businesses. So I, I think uh small businesses are hurting right now, and that the quicker we can approve this and get it out into their hands, as well as to individuals who are in dire need. Um, and they can demonstrate a, a loss of uh their current uh cer, uh, uh, of their current um resources, that we gotta, we gotta get moving on that. So I um, I couldn't agree more with um, uh, moving forward with uh the plan tonight.
All right, I've got, thank you, Commissioner Jackson. I've got Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, once again, I just want to make sure I understand where we are. Uh, Commissioner Minor, you had a motion on the table for options number four. You've added in healthcare. The childcare issue was captured under the discussion we have with County Administrator about expanding those contracts. Is that correct?
Not correct.
And um, okay, and for healthcare, this is uh, someone could apply for hardship to get reimbursement for costs associated with healthcare if they demonstrate the need. Is that, am I thinking about that correctly?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I mean, under, under the current, under the option four, as it was written, it was, you know, you can use these, you can use this um individual assistance grant on utilities, rent, or mortgage. Uh, what we're adding to that is healthcare. So if you have healthcare expenses, you can then use up to the $5,000 that you have deemed um, that, that you basically have demonstrated a need for to those four categories.
Okay.
That, does that work? Is that, give me enough guidance. Okay. Commissioner Dozier, floor's still yours.
Okay, um, with the expanded income level that is proposed in the motions, I could see how um the healthcare costs could come into play for sure. Um, I assume a lot of folks have um covered through ACA or other things. So I'm just gonna be very interested to see how that plays out, but um, I'm fine with, you know, the motion as it stands. Um, so Commissioner Minor, I would like to just go back to my question. Um, you may, I, I, I wasn't sure if you answered it or not as the maker of the motion. You may not be interested in expanding the small business category, but the way I'm looking at this is that for-profit businesses and nonprofits are employers and would have been impacted and could demonstrate an impact um to their business operations that could qualify for those small business loans. So because we haven't provided any programs for nonprofits outside of those human service programs that support people dealing with the impacts of the pandemic, would it be acceptable to expand that category to the 501(c)(3)'s as stipulated in the lean program and allow them to apply for the business grants?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Dozier, I, I would gladly expand that category for the human services grant, so long as the County Administrator and, and County Attorney uh, uh, will tell us that that is a permissible use of CARES Act dollars.
And just to be clear, I'm sorry, as the County Administrator is about to say, not human service, I don't want to get it mixed up. This is a small business grant program, the same rules, everything. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Ms. County Administrator?
That's right. We got it.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Minor wins for the best view right now, by the way, gorgeous sunset.
Yeah.
Wow.
When, when, when you see it next to my face, it's even more amazing, so.
Good shot, good shot there. Um, okay, so, so was that an acceptance um as part of the motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And a second, okay. Um, Mr. County Administrator, the one question I didn't, thank you for that, Commissioner Minor, I truly appreciate it. Um, and a lot of other folks in the community do as well. And, and, County Administrator, the one thing that you and I did not talk about and I didn't ask earlier was um, the impact on the overall reserves and the funds that we may have, your calculation that the expanded programs on the table right now may um, take up to 5 million of those, and, and the other agreements you are working on right now may be up to 5 million of the reserves. Commissioner Maddox said he wanted to come back in a few minutes and talk about the remaining 3.5 million. Um, I think we've already gotten into some of that discussion about the micro loan program. Um, and I agree with uh, the comments that have been made by you and others on that, Mr. County Administrator. Um, but the impact to the reserves for adding nonprofits, I just, looking back at the lean program, we, we only allocated about 600,000 out of um, was it about 600,000 out of a million that was dedicated to nonprofits? Is that right?
It was.
Okay, so, I just wanted to mention that because this may not be an extreme hit on our reserves. There would still be money to do childcare, additional uh food security um funding, other programs like that, right? If we added this.
That's correct. It, it depends on the level of demand unless you wanted to cap it at an amount.
No, sir. I do not want to cap it at an amount. We gotta get this money out the door. Um, but I assume you can always come back to us if you need further direction on that, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good. Thank you, sir. This is a good conversation and um, again, just appreciate all the efforts. I think we're doing, and we're helping a lot of folks. Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Jackson, you mentioned this, the businesses are hurting, individuals are, and we gotta get this money out the door to help folks. Thank you.
All right, I've got Commissioner Minor, followed by Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be, I'll be quick. Commissioner Dozier, thank you very much for that uh, that amendment. That, that really does, I'm sure you've been speaking to the same people I have. This will help out a number of people uh who have applied and initially were not eligible. So thank you. Um, the reason why I, I added that qualifying language for option four is because um, I believe 99% of the individual assistance recipients are gonna use that money as best as they, in, in the way that they need it the most. Uh, but there's probably that one out of every hundred that might use that for a down payment on a boat. Um, and then that becomes a news story. Um, and then, you know, that, that erases a lot of the goodwill that Shinton Lammy and his team have have been building by doing such tremendous work reviewing these applications and providing these funds to people that desperately need it. All it takes is one instance like that to tarnish this entire program. And without this language that I added for option four, we really would have no recourse to go to that person that made that down payment on a boat and ask for that taxpayer dollar funding back. So that's why I added that qualifying language. I think it's very important. I agree with you, Commissioner Lindley. We need to get that, those funds, these funds out as quickly as possible, and I think this will allow us to do that. But I also want to make sure that we can, we do have the ability to, to have some recourse if there are some very few rare egregious expenditures out there. So that's why I made that, that language in there. And with that, I think we're ready to put on the motion. Is that, is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Well, no, I've got a couple more people. I've got Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Proctor teed up. Commissioner Maddox, you're up.
I hate to do this, y'all, but I like, I like the idea that Commissioner, Commissioner Dozier put out there with the nonprofit. So I would have to recuse myself from that piece, but I kind of listened to what Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Lindley said, and it made a lot of sense to me. I'm going to make a substitute motion for options one, three and four and see where that goes. If I get, if I don't get a second, that's fine, but Mr. Chairman, I want to let you know I'll recuse myself from the vote if I don't get a second due to me being the CEO or the appearance of a conflict because I'm the CEO of a non, of a local nonprofit.
I will second it for discussion.
All right, Commissioner Proctor seconded it. Commissioner Proctor, you got the floor.
Mr. Chairman, before, before you give Commissioner Proctor the floor, I did not include two, so whereas somebody can come behind me if this motion passes and include two with the nonprofit piece there, because I would have to recuse myself. I didn't want it to pass without that consideration because quite frankly, I do think it's a good idea, but I didn't want to include it because I would not be able to vote on that at all. So that's why it's not included there, but I do think it's a good idea. So my motion is one, three and four.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Commissioner Proctor, the floor is yours.
Now that I understand where Commissioner Maddox is, I'm pondering that our staff has come back to us, has raised the bar on how much money that we give for our baseline awards. And the fact that we, the money is not going to the street the way we anticipated, we're raising how much we're putting out there. Commissioner Maddox, are you purposefully trying to keep the bar where it is? What are you trying to do? You're trying not to raise the bar?
No, sir. What I'm, what I'm saying here is that I'm not, I'm not trying to change the bar. I do think, I'm talking specifically about the household piece, the points that you and Commissioner Lindley made specific to giving that, giving those folks the opportunity to spend those, those monies in a way they need to resonated with me. It made a lot of sense. We went through the whole thing of the audit and making sure that, you know, we have this in place and that in place and, you know, you could be audited, you know, it was a lot to it, but I really liked the idea of what you and Commissioner Lindley had to say in that allow these folks to spend these dollars on the way they, they need. I have faith in the people who will receive these dollars that have, that most of them, they have some kind of decreasing income, they ain't thinking about no boat. They thinking about how to keep their house afloat, how to pay their rent, how to pay their mortgage, how to, how to pay their phone bill, how to make sure they got healthcare or childcare or whatever may happen. So I, when, 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 when those comments were made by you and Commissioner Lindley really resonated with me, so I thought I'd take a shot at one, three and four. I believe in what you guys had to say.
Okay, I know if I'm reading the same sheet of paper you're reading, but I'm, I'm not appreciating options two diminishes what I think our staff was trying to do. It diminishes it unless I'm missing where this, where this option two go to. What I like to recommend here and say is that I think the MBE, I like to see us take the W MBE to $20,000. And reason being commissioners is that when you look at the small number of MBEs that have actually applied and the actual amount of money that has gone back into our African American community, it, the pro rata share, it just dwindles. So I believe that, you know, you're looking at a rebounding business, a hardest-hit business, the MBE business, the one most likely to get COVID and not be in, in business, the one that has few options to go anywhere. So commissioners, I like to recommend that the MBE portion goes to $20,000 because simply put, their numbers and applications is very, very low. And I think that when we've spent this $51 million, all of us want to be able to look into people's eyes and say that we did the very best that we can. Secondly, Vince, I was asking a question about the transition from jail and back to society programs like lift, like elder, elder payments for keeping your parents and stuff. Can that be on the table?
Yes, they would have to, you could, but they would have to demonstrate a COVID impact under the, under the US Treasury guidance.
To the maker of.
If you included that as a category.
Okay. Commissioner Minor, to your original motion, are you open to adding elder care payments?
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox has a substitute motion he made for one, three and four, which you seconded. So the motion is now Commissioner Maddox's.
Okay. I don't know where two went. I still don't know where two went. And my.
We were gonna.
Where's, where's, where's option two?
Commissioner Proctor, again, I took option two out of my motion to give consideration to the nonprofit piece that Commissioner Dozier brought up. I don't want to include that in my motion because if it, if it passes in my motion, then I can't, I can't, I have to recuse, I can't even make a motion with option number two in there unless it does not include the nonprofit piece.
Okay.
And I don't want to hamstring the conversation in that way.
Yeah, 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 I understand that. So I believe that Commissioner, that notwithstanding your point that we can carry, we can chew bubble gum and walk and that we ought to be able, and I asked Attorney Olsteen, how do we not conflict Commissioner Maddox? He wants to remain out of jail and free man and all like that. How do we do that? And how do we merge the idea of Commissioner Dozier to also be a part of the playing field and the potential list of persons will be served? How can we do that and satisfy Commissioner Maddox's interest and concern?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I think moving forward, the substitute motion is Commissioner Maddox's way of ensuring that he would not have to recuse himself from the votes on the options one, three and four with the expectation that the board will then come up with a subsequent motion to take up option two in whatever form the board decides that it wants to, to do with option two. So option two isn't dead now. It's just not part of the current substitute motion.
Well, we're not going home tonight before we at least have a motion on option two. Thank you for clarifying it and I'll hold my other comments until we address option two. Thank you.
Okay, we have Commissioner Dozier up next. Commissioner Dozier.
Okay, I, it feels like we just went way around this big conversation and got right back to the beginning. So the substitute motion were merely about the voting conflict for option two. I get that. What it also sounded like, Commissioner Maddox, though, was that it was about the audit piece and the healthcare piece, which you added in to the original motion. So, so your substitute motion does not include the audit nor funding for healthcare. Is that right?
It does not. It's, 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 it's option four as stated.
As stated, okay. You persuaded me and Commissioner Minor did with the healthcare, but I can, I can get there for the substitute motion if we can come right back and make a motion for option two as expanded. I do think some controls on the direct payments are good, but I also understand how an audit and, just County Administrator, we talked about this in briefing, I think that it, because of the time sensitivity of this, it is very challenging to conduct as many controls as we may have done if it was a annual grant program or something like that. But I, I want to say this, the comfort that I get for not having a lot more controls in there like Commissioner Minor was suggesting in his original motion is, Ms. County Administrator, what you keep referencing. We chose to spend money to work with Ernst &amp; Young to ensure that we are in compliance with US Treasury to, and ensure, and I, and I have appreciated that you're getting real-time legal advice and advice from our consultants to make sure we are in compliance. This is huge. I have trust in that process from everything I've read about it and we've discussed and we've seen last month. So I, I think this is a unique situation and we need to understand that, we all do. So I can get there with the substitute motion if we can, and, and come right back or make a motion on option two. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Minor. Let's, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been a lot of time on this, on this agenda item. With Commissioner Maddox's substitute motion, we, we have no control whatsoever on how the money is spent under that, under the individual assistance program. None, none. So we can get a newspaper story about someone, you know, it'll be, I, I think the vast majority of everyone that receives this money is going to use it in a way to help them keep their home or pay their bills or, you know, pay for healthcare. I mean, those are people, these people really need money to survive. There will be that very rare example, though, where this, these funds are not used in a way that, that, that is really a good use of taxpayer dollars. And with this motion as it stands now, we have zero control over how that money could even be called back if someone spends it in a way that is clearly not sustaining themselves. This is not our money. This belongs to the taxpayers. It's given to us by the federal government, but it's the taxpayers' money. We are, we are insured, we, we are basically committed to be, being good stewards of this money. And so I think the option four, as I originally stated it, has controls that allows us to be responsible about using this money, distributing it to people that truly need it. And for that very, very rare example where maybe someone doesn't, we have some ability to do something, we have ability to do something about it. So I believe the original motion I made is, is the best way to go about it because it gives us some control over taxpayer dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Chairman, I like the comment on that one point.
Yeah, just really quick. It is, it's a rare day that Commissioner Minor and I, you know, well, we've disagreed before, but on this point, I just want to make sure, Ms. County Administrator, yes, someone could spend money on something that they, they didn't apply for. They apply for home mortgage assistance, we give them that money and they go spend it on something else. That is a risk, but the application process, the, what they have to document in order to receive those funds in the first place, that has not changed. And they will have to attest to spending the money on what they've applied for, correct? I mean, there, there are some internal controls on assessing what, what the need is.
Commissioner Dozier, to answer your question, there, there will be a requirement for attestations. And we will also put in all the internal controls, should the board go with this option, that are appropriate, even though we may be cutting the, the, the payment to the individual. So, yes, that, that is true.
Again, once again, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask that question because I could have gotten there with the audit. I think Commissioner Minor makes some good points, but I don't want to leave the impression that there are no, there's no structure here. There's going to be limits on people applying for these dollars as to our, the best of our ability. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor.
I think Commissioner Jackson, Ms. Commissioner Jackson said very, very good that, that people in their prioritizing their need, that sometimes if somebody is hungry and their children have not eaten in two days, I don't think that you have pimped out the program, Commissioner Minor, have done something majorly wrong because many people are desperate in different ways. And who are we just to, like, this money is not from heaven, it's the people's money for people. So I think that there is, we understand what you're saying, but we, none of us are living in that foxhole. None of us are living in the trenches of which some of the recipients of this money are. You know, the African proverb says, you never know the pinch on another man's foot till you walk a mile in his shoes. We ain't walking in people's shoes. So at most, we're going from $3,000 to $5,000 per household. And I just don't think that if somebody didn't, you know, comply 100 and 1% to the high moral standards that we wanted them to do. What concerns me is when somebody gets a $72.9 million refund. What concerns me is when someone makes millions and don't even pay. I mean, you get more money back on a tax refund than the whole cotton picking amount of 51 million our entire community has got to share. That concerns me, my heart aches. So I'm not going, I'm not going to walk out my shoes tonight and, and blow up over, you know, all money people mess up, all of it. I don't care where you go. You want, if you really want to have heartburn, Commissioner Minor, William Proxey used to give out the Golden Fleece Award every month. And military spending, when you start getting $600 toilet seats and stuff, there's a lot of places to go, but some hungry person benefiting from what we're trying to do here, I am just not that stuck on this right here. And it gives our staff, it makes them, the US Marshal, or some badge to go, we're in a good place, we're doing a good thing, we're trying to get this money on these streets, and it would be a travesty if seven politicians could not get $51 million on the street. It would be, you're talking about what would be a shame is not who going to blow $5,000. The shame is that seven of us can't get the money on the street. We the one going to look bad is us who are failing. So administratively, our job is to push this money on America's street. Pelosi trying to bring down another $2 trillion to hit the streets. We gotta get it on the streets. That's what we're to do. So I'm not all that concerned, commissioners, about it. Commissioner Maddox, here are your concerns. I think that we're all, you know, coming to a great place of going together. It's not perfect, but we're moving forward. And I think if we simplify the application, speed up the backend turnaround time and it may be lessening the documentation for citizens, we can move a little faster then. I believe that by November the 15th, we ought to have some deadlines, we ought to have some targeted goals, and we ought to be almost down to just left down the plain dust in these accounts. So let's see if our community will rise to the occasion to meet what we've never done before. And Vince, we need to advertise some more, hire some more people to get this money out. We the ones going to look like, man, who can't get rid of $51 million? I mean, I will get rid of it if we can. I will.
All right, thank you. I've got Commissioner Lindley followed by Commissioner Maddox. Let's kind of bring it in for a landing here. Commissioner Lindley.
Really? I hardly ever talk. I have to bring it in for a landing.
No, 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 you talk all you want.
I've been biting my tongue, not wanting to say something about if that person spends $400 on a boat and then runs for public office, that's a news story, Commissioner Minor. But also, under our previous system, our current system, if the money goes right to the mortgage holder, the landlord, or if the money goes right to the mortgage holder, the landlord, or the utility company, that person then doesn't have to pay it and they can buy a boat with that. I just feel like we have to have some trust. We don't have the oversight. We don't need to be doing this. So I'm going to go with Commissioner Maddox's substitute, which I believe deletes the audit requirement. Am I correct? Straight out, number four. So I will go with one, three, four, and then we want to come quickly back to number two and get that done, right?
On point, real quick, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Commissioner Minor on point, then Commissioner Maddox.
It's not an audit requirement. We're not imposing upon ourselves to do an audit.
I know.
Basically saying we have an audit available to us if you choose to use it.
Okay, Commissioner Maddox.
I'll be brief. But I want Commissioner Minor to take our opportunity to understand this real quick. When we were in Blueprint and we made the CDRE, whatever it was, that we made a grant program for our businesses, I don't believe there was anybody who mentioned an audit program for that program. We put money in individuals' pockets and we can't give it to them. We have to audit them. And I thought the point that Commissioner Lindley brought up was perfect in that, okay, we pay the mortgage company, well, they can use that five grand to buy a boat there too. I just, I just believe that what we have to do is, like Commissioner Proctor says, push this money out into the streets, get it to the people who need it most, based off of their financial need, and then watch it circulate. And that's why I made the motion I did. Now, if there's somebody else that believes in one, three, and four, and wants to add, one, three, and four as is, and wants to add to what the peace Commissioner Dozier talked about, I'm glad to recuse myself from that vote and allow them to make their motion to take this thing over and rescind my motion, my substitute motion. But if not, now I'm letting this substitute motion ride, you guys will come back to two. I'm just ready to see four happen as is without all the stipulation that goes along with it because we didn't consider these for businesses or anybody else. It's not fair to the people. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, one, three, four, as in the materials we've got. All in favor of the motion as signified by saying aye? Aye? Okay, opposed. Who is opposed? Nobody. Everybody, okay, unanimous, okay. I would entertain a motion for option two if somebody wants to articulate that. Commissioner Dozier?
Can I make a motion for option two and to expand the program to include not-for-profit 501(c)(3)'s under the guidelines used in the lean program for Blueprint? Same restrictions on what types of organizations include not-for-profit employers in, forgive me, it is late.
Second.
Yes. Program. Thank you.
And Commissioner Minor seconded it. And if I understood, it was no associations, no religious organizations, no political organizations. There was a series of things we worked out when we did the first round, if I remember correctly. Is that, we're working from the same list, basically?
I'm sorry.
We're talking about the nonprofits we delineate. You pull out political action groups, you pull out religious churches, you pull out anybody who's in a.
Correct. And I assume we would also pull out those already receiving funding through the nonprofit human services grant process?
Yeah, so it would be non-human.
No, no, no. No, no, no. We're not going to do that. Mr. Chairman?
No, I'm sorry.
We have some money.
Commissioner Proctor, I'm not finished with the motion. Let me clarify this real quick. Ms. County Administrator, I understand where you were going right there, but the money we have already allocated to human service organizations is for those organizations that are, for the programs that help support our community for pandemic relief. So.
And PPE, yeah.
Florida, if they're helping people deal with mortgage foreclosures, that's the only money they could apply for under the existing. Is that right?
That's correct.
So no, this is nonprofits, no other stipulation.
Got it. Just needed that clarification.
Like a business to their operations overhead employee cost.
Got it. We just needed that clarification. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, Commissioners, questions? Yes, sir, Commissioner Proctor?
I wanted to ask to make of the motion the clarification that has just been made to staff, which I wholeheartedly agree that we would, if staff could comment, Vince, if you could tell us, would we be taking food off the table? Would we be flattening attire of the program if we took the MSWB, MWSBE program to $20,000? Would we disadvantage everybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, I'd like to add to the make of the motion that we up the ante from $10,000 to $20,000 for MWSBE businesses to the make of the motion.
All right. Commissioner Dozier, that's in yours.
Commissioner Proctor, just to frame this in real terms, under option two, an employer that, and Ms. County Administrator, help me with this, an employer business that has 1 to 10 employees could qualify for $5,000. If they are also a minority or woman-owned business, they could qualify for supplemental award of $10,000. Is that correct? So they could apply for a total of $15,000 already.
Correct.
That is a substantial increase over non-minority and women businesses. To take that to $20,000, I I'm not comfortable doing that right now. I would rather see whether, in more details from the county administrator, whether that we've seen that request come in, whether that need is there, whether we, it may be, but I'm not comfortable doing that on the fly. I think the increases that are proposed in option two are going to be helpful. Ms. County Administrator, is there any additional information? I mean, you must have been relying on something to increase those amounts in option two in advance of this item. Is that right?
We were just trying to stay proportional to the amounts of the supplemental awards and the baseline awards that were initially established and to provide enough of an incentive there. However, my response to Commissioner Proctor was simply that this is, this part of this is entirely within the discretion of the board. I know you know that to determine the amounts that you deem appropriate. Relative hardest-hit, WSB, MWSBA rebounding, entirely your discretion on what you set those amounts to.
Okay. I, Commissioner Proctor, we've been at this dialogue on this item, which is the first general business item. I know we've already taken up one other for a long time. I think we deliberated on this a lot to help hardest-hit businesses and to help minority and women-owned businesses. I'd like to add in the not-for-profit employers. And if we want to contemplate increasing these amounts again, I would add to the motion an agenda item for the 13th and bring back additional information or recommendations to the county administrator. Again, that's outside of option three, where we're letting the county administrator go forward, but I'm not comfortable increasing those amounts at this moment. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you. I heard Commissioner Dozier mention, Vince, a justification for hardest-hit category. I like the hardest-hit category. And if it's our discretion for our minority businesses, go to $20,000. Again, I say that we are here tonight on this item because this money, we got more money than we can give away. We got more money we can give away. But when you look at proportionally, when you look at the proportional, excuse me, when you look at the proportional of take of dollars and monies that are actually going to the street, and when you look at minority category, as I have tried to look at everything, including those first things that we did through OEV and all of that, we need to up the MWSBE to $20,000. Otherwise, to get this right here and then to have 25 employees or 1 to 10 employees to try to get two categories, I think we could do this with just one category, Commissioners. I know that it's not our habit ever to advantage or to do more for minority businesses. That's just, that's not the spirit of Leon County. I get that. But could we just one day, one time with free money, not the local tax money? I know, I mean, I look at the MBE spending from our county. We don't spend 2% of the total budget of our monies with minority businesses. We just don't. I don't know why. I've been looking at this for two decades. We just can't. But now we have a chance on some free money that is not that sacred, holy money that comes from Leon County's people. Can the minority businesses qualify and get some money that's been given to the county to give away? That's what's before us tonight. This is giveaway money that we're here tonight to try and up the ante, to do more. This is a chance that we have not in the past. And I encourage each of you to look at our spending, look at the proportionality of our spending, and see how much money, 35% of Leon County population base contributes year after year after year after year in every sales tax, every property tax. But when it comes to the county, you and I having a chance to reciprocate, to reinvest, we just don't. If we don't want to do that tonight, if this money, Christian Dozier, is too much for us to do, then I accept that. I've had to accept it for 24 years. So that was my ask. I would like for the administrator to bring back on the 13th, unless there's resistance that we don't want to look at it. But once in our lives, can we, that's okay. I'd like for the administrator to bring something back, the 13th, that looks at hard-hit and minority business increases to $20,000.
I'll second that.
Well, we got a motion on the floor.
Is that a substitute?
Substitute motion.
I offered.
I offer that as a substitute motion, the motion for number two with the categories of hardest-hit and minority business going to $20,000, take it or leave it. I mean, so what?
Point of clarification, Madam Attorney? I can vote on a substitute motion, correct?
He's a CEO of Boys and Girls.
The substitute motion does not include nonprofits, correct, Commissioner Proctor?
No, it do.
Oh, it does? Okay, well, I'm out.
Yeah, we'll see you tonight. Bye-bye. Good night.
Mr. Chair, can I chime back in here?
Sure.
The substitute motion is to ask for an agenda item. That is exactly what I offered. It is, we have been at this for hours and I simply wanted more information on the hardest-hit, on raising those categories to $10,000 or $20,000. Now, if there are more people, you know, more board members who would like to see those numbers increased, by all means, let's get into that discussion. And we, Commissioner Lindley, you just seconded a motion to bring back an agenda item at the next. I am fine with that. I offered to include that in the motion. I do not want to lose the nonprofit.
Let me cut. Yeah, let me cut through this a little bit. I think we're talking about the same thing here, okay? I'll just say, I'm with Commissioner Dozier on this. I'm not at a point where I just want to add stuff on the fly. I'm okay having staff bring back and have a discussion when we got a little bit more information. So I would support the original motion, which was two with the add-on and leave it, and then we'd have a discussion.
Sure.
Go ahead. Yeah, you want to weigh in?
Commissioners, and please know that I am not trying to further complicate this. I would just make a mere suggestion that if you think that you may be interested in doing hardest-hit or MWSBE or increasing the supplemental awards from a timing standpoint, it would be very helpful if you did that now and not have it come back because we have to roll out these programs. We have an awful lot, and I know this is what we do. We have an awful lot of computer programs to change in the process, and we would love to be able to roll these programs out quickly. I understand, and again, I'm not trying to influence your policy decisions whatsoever, but if any of these were something that you wanted to consider tonight, that now would be the optimal time to do so. If not, we're more than happy to bring this back, but it would almost require us to put the rest of this on hold for a week and come back and deal with you. I can't, I don't want to burden you with this, but I can't describe the level of infrastructure that's in place currently in doing this. This would allow us to make all of these changes now and implement the changes immediately. Otherwise, it would likely require us to wait to do that. So anyway, again, just wanted to mention that, Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Proctor, we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Were you recognizing me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it's your motion, but just on the motion, not to re.
Okay, I wanted to clarify. Commissioner Dozier tried to make my substitute motion information request. My substitute motion is to, all the things which were stated, to include the nonprofits. That's why Commissioner Maddox is off the screen. But to keep those nonprofits in place, but to double the categories of hardest-hit and MSWB. So now, what our county administrator said, would this do harm? Would this commit violence against monies and other categories of what we're doing? Our administrator said no tonight. And it's the same comment he will make on October the 13th. He's already clear about whether or not this is appropriate, it can be done. The issue is whether or not you clear tonight. He already clear. He the same guy going to come back in two weeks and make roughly the same statement to us. But if you don't want to do that, it's all right tonight. This is a matter of the heart. It's just a bunch of money we got, we're trying to give. I am simply saying to those who are hardest-hit and to those who traditionally don't qualify, don't have enough this, can't do this or that, whatever it is, for those who traditionally are always left out, not seen, excluded, whatever, we have a chance to do something different tonight. If it's not this board's desire, I will limp along with us, remain a member on this board, and it just didn't happen. So.
Is that a substitute motion?
Substitute.
That was a substitute.
Commissioner Proctor? Substitute motion?
Second.
Yeah. All right, I've got Commissioner Dozier, I got Commissioner Jackson and then Commissioner Dozier. Yeah, I think Commissioner Lindley seconded the motion for Commissioner Proctor. Is that what I heard? Yeah, okay.
That's all I needed. I can take my hand down.
Okay, Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, let me be clear about this because Commissioner Proctor, and I truly hope that he had his say on this, and he mentioned my name several times, and we're not going to get into back and forth. I do not intend that. But we love to say that we don't do anything for minority and women-owned businesses in this community. We wouldn't have this category in the first place if we didn't think critically about this. We would not have done all the things we've done at Blueprint. Our staff works overtime. We have increased minority and women business participation. Nothing I was saying is disparaging that need. And I really am disappointed that you would take that stand after this incredible conversation. What I was after, what I didn't articulate, was that we've been through this discussion for so long. The need for childcare, the need for food, the need for all of these different things is substantial. It's not just business programs. I didn't want to negatively impact any of these other things that the county administrator and others are working on right now that are filling critical needs in our community. We have to have a bunch of tools. I can actually support increasing the amounts. I mean, if someone else had made the motion, I could have gotten there. I do think it's important to add the nonprofits in. So I'm not, you know, fundamentally opposed to this increase. I see Commissioner Jackson, I see Commissioner Lindley chiming in here. I just think we needed some caution because these things, we got a recommendation from staff, and I want to make sure we have money for food and childcare and all the other things too. So, Mr. County Administrator, you said a little while ago that it's board discretion to increase these categories. In that same vein. In that same vein, 5,000 is not a whole lot for a business that has one to 10 employees, which are a lot of our businesses. Do we want to entertain increasing all of these categories? I mean, we could do that, and a minority business or a woman-owned business could apply for the baseline and for hardest hit. I'm not necessarily suggesting that right now, but we have a lot more things we could discuss. And it's troubling to me that we're, that we're making the case based on, um, the fact, you know, an idea that we're not doing enough for these businesses. So I just wanted to, to say that and to also say the supplemental awards included hardest hit, minority, women's, small business, and rebounding business. We had three categories. If we're going to double, if I hear the substitute correctly, double hardest hit and minority and women, why are we not doubling rebounding businesses, which taking it from five to 10,000? I- is there a need to do that, or are the first two categories hardest hit, minority, and women really what we want to focus on?
Commissioners, I'm open to doubling rebounding businesses. I honestly didn't see their definition, um, that I remember seeing their definition. So I didn't know who they, what that was. That's why I didn't mention it. So if it was in the reading, uh, write up, I apologize that I, um, I, I missed it. So not knowing it, I didn't mention it, that's why.
We can move on, Mr. Chair, but I am, I am missing the collaborative nature of this board, and I'm really missing the, the times when we were sitting and listening to each other because I don't think any of us are throwing minority and women-owned businesses under the bus at all. We're trying to help as many people in our community as possible. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. The motion, as I understand it, is for option two with the add-on for not-for-profits that Commissioner Dozier had initially added, plus, if I understand correctly, doubling MB, I can never, MWSBE and hardest hit.
Correct.
And, okay.
Rebounding wasn't included in the initial, but.
All right. All in favor of the motion as it has been presented signify by saying aye.
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 All right, all those opposed. All right, I guess motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, um.
Mr. Chair, please, miss recusing myself, please, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Six one, six one with a recusal, six oh, um. All right, so that's it for that. Okay. Dear God, sorry. My head is spinning. All right. Uh, good discussion, long discussion. Let's go. We've got. County attorney, Madam Attorney, talk to me. What do we have here? What do we have? Where are we?
We're on agenda item number 14.
Okay, agenda item number 14.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Commissioners, you have before you, uh, in response to the request at the September 15th, 2020 regular meeting, um, a brief overview of various COVID-19 mitigation measures, uh, along with a summary legal analysis, um, that provide you with some information about what some other jurisdictions around the state of Florida have done to mitigate, uh, the spread of COVID. Um, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. In addition to summarizing some of, um, the restrictions or requirements, um, each of those, uh, orders or ordinances was attached to the agenda items so that you could take a look at, uh, those in total if you prefer to do so. Uh, but staff is, uh, currently recommending, um, if I'm moving back up to the agenda item, uh, that the board, uh, approve the staff's, uh, report and the summary legal analysis.
Move the option one.
All right, have a motion. And, uh, is there a second, Commissioner? I see Commissioner Maddox. All right, Commissioner Dozier, you're up to speak.
Um, yes, sir. I'll make this quick. I just wanted to say thank you to the county attorney for this item. Um, I think it came out of a robust discussion, um, at our December 15th meeting. We had seen a lot of things about, uh, pool parties, about questions about the football game, other things like that. Um, so I wanted to take this moment and say that since that time, our university presidents, others have really stepped up, um, to reinforce the importance of social distancing and, uh, masks and other measures off campus and on campus. And I really appreciate those efforts. I think, um, that is the right direction versus additional enforcement, which as articulated in this item would be really difficult. So it was a good exercise, but I think a lot of folks in our community have stepped up, um, and, and leaned into this issue in recent weeks, and I hope it is getting better. So, thank you, um, and, uh, yeah, I hope.
Okay.
Come back and have this conversation.
I, I would echo Commissioner Dozier's comments with the comment, I don't know how, but I've got a number of people that asked, were we thinking about demanding or requiring masks outside? And I, this was, I think, an impetus from this discussion. I want to make, be abundantly clear. I don't think there was ever a discussion about us mandating masks outside. So, um, good piece of work there. Thank you for your work. I've got a motion. I've got a second. Any discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, June, uh, June 15th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just a moment while I transition to, uh, with the technology here. Okay, the item before you, item number 15, uh, requests, uh, as requested at the June 16th meeting, seeks the board consideration of establishing Juneteenth as a paid holiday, uh, for Leon County government employees. I know there have been, um, um, uh, arguments, uh, 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 posited in the community, uh, related to, uh, May 20th, very valid, uh, being, um, a more appropriate date, uh, for the state of Florida. Um, however, it's important to note that, uh, both, uh, the state legislature and the Congress have indicated that they intend to file legislation to make June 19th a federal and state holiday. If they do, uh, then, um, changing the proposed date of June 19th, uh, to May 20th could create a discrepancy, uh, uniquely on County. Uh, that said, uh, we're seeking your direction, and, uh, uh, we've received, uh, five comments on this item, which have been distributed, uh, and, um, uh, have been made part of the public record and have been posted, uh, accordingly. And with that, we're seeking your direction.
All right. Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Proctor, followed by Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Maddox.
Uh, I believe Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor brought this forward. I'm going to follow his lead on this. I do believe that, uh, there's, there is a lot of validity in the research been done by the Riley House, as well as our res- as well as the rest of our resident historians, uh, here in Leon County. Um, you know, Juneteenth may be a national thing, but it seems like May 20th is more of a, more of a Florida thing. So I'm going to follow the lead of Commissioner Proctor, who, who put this, this agenda item on the, uh, on the docket. Uh, but I'll, I'll support June 20th if he, if he places it out there.
Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner Lindley, then Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Proctor.
Commissioners, uh, Com- Commissioner Maddox is right. I've gotten an earful. It's like, I don't know, history. I think I have probably taught more history classes, uh, American history, African-American history, constitutional law, than, um, anybody in Tallahassee out there doing it for 34 years. Um, but the demand that I receive is for the May 20th, uh, date because, uh, down there at that house that my uncle, uh, is alleged to have built on Park Avenue, uh, George Proctor, that's where the emancipation occurs on May 20th every year. And I'm sure that if Uncle George, uh, knew that at the time he built that house, slaves were not free. But, um, when they were, and when that glorious news came down in 1865, it was, uh, there, uh, at the corner of Calhoun and Park Avenue, uh, that this document was read. So I offer, um, a motion that we, um, in the spirit of what we've said before, we recognize May 20th, uh, for the more accurate emancipation proclamation that occurred here in Leon County. Um, then finally, um, I know that Vincent said that the state of Florida, the American Congress, all like that, them people had like 155 years to come up with a Juneteenth. And after 155 years, they have not yet made a holiday on Juneteenth. So I'm not persuaded by what they gonna do. We have a chance to actually do something. And the distance between do and done can be closed tonight. And we don't have to just be on the book to do something. Let's be done, done something when we leave. So I offer that we adopt a holiday for Leon County per all the consistent, uh, adoption policy rules for May 20th. My motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Have a second. Commissioner Lindley, the floor is yours.
Well, you know, I, I completely support the May 20th, and I actually am embarrassed that when the Juneteenth came up, I didn't, uh, notice, didn't think about May 20th because I've been on the Riley House board for five years and attended lots of the emancipation celebrations at the Nod House, at the cemetery, and so forth. And, uh, if we're an outlier by having our holiday on May 20th, so be it. Um, and I agree with you, Commissioner Proctor, it could be a cold day before we actually see Juneteenth as a national holiday. So I'm good with this.
All right, Commissioner. All right, Commissioner Dozier, followed by Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, I think the idea to introduce this on the agenda was good. I appreciate that. I think the information we've received from, uh, many, um, involved for decades in, I, I don't want to say reclaiming, but really exposing our true and full history. All parts of our history should be recognized. And I appreciate the efforts of Altamis Barnes and all those associated with the Riley House, including their board members, Commissioner Lindley, um, who have focused on this for, um, a long time and been advocates for it. When I spoke to Ms. Barnes, um, I will say that I recognize there may come a time where we have two holidays, um, back to back. If it does become, I'm going to lean a little more optimistic. Yes, it may take a long time. It may not happen. But if it did happen that the state or the, uh, national holiday was recognized, I think we would follow that, and appropriately so. Um, a national day of, of recognition and remembrance would be good. Um, I also think supporting the long efforts of May, you know, to recognize Florida Emancipation Day as May 20th is, is critically important, and we should support that. And I hope that day is recognized across the state. Um, if we want to make that decision tonight, I can support the motion on the table. But I will say, I, I noted in some of the emails we got that there was a request to just put it on hold for a month or two until we could hear, um, more from, uh, folks at the Riley House and others. I, i- if, if the board is comfortable with just moving forward, May 20th, again, I will support that. But I also would like to see us, you know, take the issue up again in a few months, maybe in January even, and make sure that we are not just saying that we're going to have a holiday recognized by Leon County, but that we are putting some support behind that, um, and elevating Emancipation Day, helping to do that, whether it be in the legislature or, um, or local events that are, are pretty special and, um, wonderful every year. So I just, I just wanted to add those comments, Mr. Chair, fine with whichever way we go tonight. But I, I think we need to, um, do a bit more in the future than just say it's a holiday. So thank you.
All right, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be really quick. Uh, it, it's, uh, I'm very proud to support this motion. Uh, Altamis Barnes and, and, and has spoken with me. I'm sure she's spoken with all of you. Uh, and that, uh, also wanted to thank her and, um, her team of folks that helped put together that historical document. That was really informative and helpful. So proud to support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Could I add one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we have our workshop on our state and, uh, federal legislative priorities, maybe we can discuss with our, uh, state legislators the idea of having the more correct, uh, holiday for Florida as May 20th, so that they aren't just, and surely some of the legislators will, it will dawn on them that May 20th is Florida's, uh, proper day as opposed to Juneteenth. But we could ask Jeff et al. to.
On point, on point to Commissioner, on point to Commissioner Lindley's statement, um, I'm not opposed to even Commissioner Lindley us going ahead and talk about a resolution to the state today. Uh, asking, asking that they recognize the 20th instead of Juneteenth, because that is Florida's day. As well as even, as well as even a, a, uh, resolution to the federal government, asking that they do the right thing to recognize, recognizing Juneteenth, because that is the day, if I'm not mistaken, that, that everybody, uh, will celebrate as all states being free of slavery. But for the purposes of what you just spoke of, I don't see any reason why we can't do a, uh, proclamation, I'm sorry, resolu- a resolution to the state, asking that they recognize Juneteenth.
Right.
I'm, I'm sorry, May 20th as Florida's day of independence for all slaves. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's what I'm making, that's what I'm making a motion specific to.
Could that be added to our, could that be amended to the motion?
Who's the maker of the motion? Commissioner Proctor?
Proctor, seconded by Lindley.
I seconded.
All right, let me weigh in real quick. I, I, I'm a huge fan of Altamis, and boy, she, she, I know, I want half the energy she has. Um, she's a great lady, and I'm going to go with the motion. But I'm going to reserve the right that in the event that the federal government surprises us and does declare a national holiday and/or the state, and they're in conflict with us, that we at least have another discussion about, can we do either or? Because I think we're going to create a lot of confusion. I get the state and our state and the history, and I think it's a great piece of history, but it looks to me like we're pushing ourselves off into kind of law. And in fairness, it might happen before next year, and if it does, then we can have that discussion. So I'll, I'm fine with the motion as presented, but I'm just going to reserve the right to potentially come back and say, let's talk a little bit further about this. Do we have two separate holidays now? How's that treated? I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know. So we've got the motion by Commissioner Proctor.
I'm sorry. I would be, I'm sorry. I, I understand your hesitation there, but I would be violently against the, the thought of taking one off, off of the, off of our, our, our holidays for the other. If, if the federal government decides to do that, then that's what they decide to do. But I think, what, what's wrong with celebrating both? That's just my opinion. We had it cut out the other day. I understand some of it, but.
I just said we'd have a discussion. I'm not sa- I'm not convinced I would do one way or the other. I just think. So we have a motion that we celebrate May 20th as emancipation. Uh, Commissioner Proctor made the motion. Commissioner Lindley seconded it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Help get, help get a resolution.
And the resolution went right. Uh, any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 16, uh, seeks the board approval to accept additional state funds for the construction of the Northeast Lake Munson Sewer Project and, uh, the Woodville Sewer System Project in the amounts of 1.85 million and 3.75 million respectively. Uh, as explained, uh, further in the analysis, uh, before you, these projects have, have already benefited from significant county, uh, funding matched by state grants and are both in the final stages of permitting and design. And this funding will assist greatly as we enter the construction phases of these projects. I have no speakers on either, on the, on this item.
I move the item, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Dozier, you want to weigh in?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, um, a great item. I'm glad we're moving it forward. Um, I wanted to note under the fiscal impact, Mr. County Administrator, correct me if I misinterpreted this, but, um, the, the match is due to come from the county share of the Blueprint 2020 Water Quality Funds.
That's correct.
And, um, that's allocated on an annual basis, so we're going to recoup those funds over time. But should we realize any future deficit, revenue reductions in blueprint spending, this is harkening back a couple of weeks, we just need to be careful, um, about our spending on blueprints. on blueprints because overall revenue reductions will, at some point, or could impact the annual allocation for water quality projects like this. Is that right?
That's correct. For, for these purposes, that sensitivity analysis has already been done, but you're absolutely right. In the future, if we receive additional funds, we would, we would need to continue to do the same.
And we've, we've worked so, thank you, we've worked so hard to position ourselves well for these types of grants, that, that this is not going to be the last grant we need or hope to receive for water quality that would require a local match. Is that right?
Hopefully, yes.
Well, in, in those statewide groups that I participate in, whether it's Florida Regional Planning Council, or even Suncoast Parkway Connector, Floor Association of Counties, Water Quality, oftentimes BMAP process and water quality issues will come up, and Leon is recognized even by DEP staff and others as really being ahead of the game here. So want to just maintain that focus. The other thing, Ms. County Administrator, not necessarily germane to the sewer project, but I have this question from the esteemed Jim Stevenson in the back of my mind about water quality testing and signage particularly at Lake Munson. I know we moved forward with the catch and release signs for our holding ponds that probably don't have fish that are good to eat. So we're going to put up signage there to let people know they're catch and release. But I'd love an update at some point about the signs at Lake Munson. It is pretty cluttered down there. There's a lot of different signage going on. I just want to make sure that we've got the right notices at the lake. Is that acceptable?
We got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Commissioners. I, I don't know if Ms. Boss, if Ms. Boss is taking our minutes tonight, but I just want to tell Ms. Boss that the historicity of this measure, it has a long history that predates tonight. I want to thank our staff, Vince, thank Alan, other staff persons. I remember Dr. Sean McGlinn did the first study with Congressman Boyd. I believe Vince gave us $300,000 to do that first study by Dr. Sean McGlinn. What I'm trying to say is that this, what we doing tonight, it been on the come up since the 1990s. And if I don't have much of a voice when I turn 95, and you can't understand what I'm saying, it's because I've screamed so loud for this project to come. And I think Commissioner Jackson and I probably can go down to Woodville and stand a little taller in a few more days. We're going to be able to stand tall, because these pipes beneath the ground is going to change, is going to change the appearance on top of the ground, and it's going to add velocity to a controlled and qualitative growth. It's going to protect the springs, it's going to open up affordable housing options, many, many families there who are land rich in that area, but they have to put one house on 10 acres, one house on 10 acres. This moves us closer to fostering a more rambunctious growth potential for the South County. And I know that we get excited, Commissioner Deloge, Chairman, when you go and you just see the growth going up Thomasville Road, all the way up to Bannerman, all the way past Bannerman. Well, one day, it might be some lights in a little place called Woodville. And to think, somewhere around 1995, they were talking about succeeding from Leon County, pulling out of the county, because they didn't understand what they received for support from the county, a reciprocal value of investment for dollars they paid for taxes. So this comes a long way, Vince, and I want to thank you for hanging in there, partner. And hopefully, one day. Now, Commissioner Jackson, I won't be around, but tell everybody that putting pipes in the ground is not sexy stuff. You, you can't even put that on a campaign flag. I put sewer pipes down. You know, I got the sewer pipe. You don't want to know that. You don't want to tell nobody you done that. But that we have achieved that, when the complexion of the topography changes with expanded commercial realities there, we would know it's been almost a 20-year effort to get to tonight, and I'm very, very grateful. Thank you all.
All right, Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Proctor, otherwise known as the dean of the county commission. And I'll schedule a lunch with you at the deli bar at the Food Giant in Woodville. I'll have my people call yours.
That's living there. All right, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number seventeen seeks your approval to award a bid on the Leon County Detention Center exterior stair renovations to the lowest responsive bidder. The renovations have been budgeted and adequate funding is available in the capital improvement budget. And with that, we're recommending option one. And we've received no speakers on, comments on this item.
Moved to option one.
We have a motion. We have a second from Commissioner Dozier. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up.
Chairman, thank you. Item number eighteen, due to an upcoming expiration of an existing janitorial contract, a new, a new bid process was required and conducted and resulted in the recommendation before you today to award the bid to the two lowest responsive bidders. This expense is, of course, contemplated in our operating budget. We received no comments on this item, and we're recommending options one, A and B.
Commissioners, I got Commissioner Maddox is making a motion for.
That recommendation.
All right, and Commissioner Dozier seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Last item, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, item number nineteen, Commissioner seeks a full board appointment to the, of a citizen, to COCA. COCA has provided three nominees presented here for your consideration, which include Mary Elizabeth Keating, Kristen Summers, and I came to the hardest one last, Mr. or Mrs. Deng.
This is. All right, Commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Minor, you got your hand up? What would you like?
Well, I, I would, I would defer to Commissioner Maddox if, if he has a preference at being on, served on that board. Commissioner Maddox, do you have any kind of?
This is the COCA board. I gave, I gave that to Kristen. Go for it, Kristen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, Commissioner Dozier, do you have a, an inclination or a preference?
Well, Commissioner Minor, actually, I was, funny, I was going to say that all three of these applicants look like good voices. I do know, I'm more familiar with Ms. Kristen Summers and have known about her interests for the last year. I have not communicated with the other two, but I'd be willing to entertain any comments from any of you if you know one of the other two applicants. Otherwise, I would make a motion for Kristen Summers and many thanks to the other two.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Minor seconded. Is there any other discussion about nominee for the COCA board? Seeing none, all in favor of Kristen Summers? Is it, I don't have, yeah.
Yes.
As designated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, I think.
That concludes it.
Five and a half hours in, we're done. I'll, I'll make a couple of quick comments. I'll step out of line and go first, just to, listen, thank you guys for your patience, for your endurance, for your hard work. This has been quite a slog. I'm, I'm thankful for the work staff has done here for the last six or eight months. I think we take that for granted sometimes. I, I really, I, as somebody said, I think Commissioner Dozier earlier tonight, I think it will be much nicer when we can look around the table and at least have a conversation where, because it's tough trying to figure out who's talking and who's stepping on who without trying to feel like I'm cutting people off. So, and for the general public that feels like somehow we're trying to limit discussion, please understand that's the furthest thing from our mind. We're trying to have a meeting that flows, that we all get a chance to have our two cents put in, and we can, and engage the public in. I have only one question, and if Claudia's still around, or at least, no? Okay. I just wondered, I, I haven't seen much testing up on the north side of town. I know there's some mobile sites. If there's a way to get, that was my only ask, is to see if we could potentially have a church or a local place, maybe the library up there, and offer some testing at some point. I've had a few people ask, so. Okay. With that, Madam County Attorney.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Wow, okay. Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we threw a line at you tonight, and thank you very much for all the good guidance. We appreciate it.
Okay, celebrity squares, Principal Jackson. That's Pal.
Yeah, that's Pal, as in Prince of Pal. And don't spell it with a male lead. Thank you for calling on me. I am going to momentarily stand up on the soapbox to remind us. And I think Commissioner Proctor did a good job earlier that although our numbers are improving, we need to be guarded, and we need to continue to practice the three behaviors that we here repeated over and over and have become a part of the daily classroom, I guess, rituals and all across our district. In fact, we as adults could learn a whole lot from how well our students have adapted to this new era of, of interacting with the public. We can't become numb to the numbers. The numbers are still, someone mentioned earlier tonight, 1 million deaths. And while that seems in the overall population of our entire planet, one in every five of those occurs right here on the US soil, certainly the most free and most powerful, in my opinion, nations still around. I think that one death is too many. I hate to quote Joseph Stalin, but he once said that one death is a tragedy, but millions of deaths are just a statistic. I encourage you to continue to not think of these numbers as statistics, and that going in either direction, they affect families' lives. Either they make them better or they make them worse. I can't help but go back to our county administrator who consistently brings up every move we make here lately. As Commissioners, it seems to either mitigate the spread, which means slow the spread, or else promote the spread. I certainly hope that our move tonight for our community and our young people and our athletes towards some normalcy will be followed closely by guarded adults, and that we will have some responsibility towards those young people and the homes they go home to. And the folks that they may or may not come into contact with, it may be immunocompromised. I think it's really important that we understand that while numbers are improving, we know how quickly this thing can go in the opposite direction if we relax. I do take a couple of other points. I take a great offense to a discussion had recently through the local media that colleges and universities are a time to party. I'm looking at Chairman Deloge and Chairman Proctor, and unfortunately, none of the rest of you are as old as us, so you don't have college-age children. But I promise you that when we sent them off to school, we did not send them off and tell them, now go party and, and do what you want to, and binge drink and do all those things that will possibly endanger you or others. I believe that we brought in a panel of experts that had a narrative on exactly how the effect that it has on young people and the minimal effect it had on them. It also, not openly, but alluded to the fact that our local university president, President John Thrasher at FSU was practicing or might be engaging in draconian policies. I want to applaud President Thrasher for his staunch stance and for his bravery in saying that it's important for young people to wear masks. It's important for us to remember our community. It's important for us to remember our neighbors. I'm sure many of you have been around long enough to realize that we were in the top five ranked for best partying schools nationwide for years and years. I believe that was during the peak of my attendance at FSU. And while, yes, we want them to go in and have a good time, we have now, for the second year in a row, not only stayed in the top 20 of public universities nationally, but we have the number one ranked, number one ranked historically black community college, or excuse me, college and university, right here in Tallahassee. I think that both of the university presidents take it serious, and that their strong stance on that with our young people will make a difference in that age group between 18 and 25, and that we will start to see those numbers go down. Right now, they represent almost half of the positive cases we have here in Leon County. I would hope that we could do better. Last and not least, I want to share once again my public service announcement for fbcommunity.org. It is a website created by our very own Hannah Crow, who has taken it upon herself to volunteer hours and hours and hours to creating a really user-friendly website for the Fort Braden community. And I'm really proud of the work that she's done there, but more importantly, the way that it's kind of engaged and drawn community members together for things that concern them. Thanks so much, Chairman. You could not have said it any better when you said that the logistics of running these virtual meetings, I think we'll all be happier when we can return face to face and read some body language and see some smiles and, and be able to have those conversations that Commissioner Dozier alluded to earlier. Thank you for allowing me indulgence in a little bit of extended time. I appreciate it.
Good comments. Thank you. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very quick, because the first presidential debate is coming up in 12 minutes. So, real quick, I wanted to thank county staff of the County Media Relations Department. Those, they have been terrific in promoting Leon Cares. I can't walk six feet without running into an ad about Leon Care. And that's a good thing. So kudos to our county administrator and his staff in that department. Also, I want to thank the public who wrote us on the mask, no mask debate that took place today. I'm sure the rest of you also got an email about every 20 or 30 seconds, taking one position or another. And I'll tell you, anyone that's listening, that's watching this meeting, we read those. And so, you know, the time you spend sending us a message, whether it's a sentence or five or six paragraphs, we do our best to read those, and it matters. So thank you. I've been talking with our county administrator for a while now on a, on an initiative called the Government Alliance for Racial Equity. It's an organization that promotes racial equity within local state governments. And it's a membership organization. So you can join this organization, and you become part of a network of governments around the country that are trying to become more equitable in how they handle racial considerations, not just within their own operations, but how they relate to their communities. A lot of great communities around the country have already joined this and are making, are kind of leading the path on how we can have more racial equity within our government. County Administrator has asked some of his staff to take a look at it. Wanda Hunter took a look at it, and I think did a great, very brief analysis on it. What I'd like to do is, with the board's approval, bring this up at a future meeting where you all can take a look at the Government Alliance for Racial Equity Toolkit, as well as the analysis from Wanda and other members of the staff on whether or not Leon County should become a member, and what we can benefit by having that, that, that racial equity toolkit that we might be able to use in some of our functions. So with that, I'd like to have a motion to bring this up for a future board meeting.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got Commissioner Dozier seconded. Any discussion? Good idea, Rick, Commissioner Minor. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion by Commissioner Minor signify by saying aye. saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Lastly, just wanted to urge everybody to go vote. If you request a mail-in ballot, you've already received your ballot, probably. Go vote. Make sure your family votes, friends, coworkers. Chase them down, track them down, make sure they vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, I want to congratulate you on a job well done on running us again through this exercise. I wanted to say that, you know, we're pretty passionate about the things we believe in. I think that's what makes us a good board. I think people believe in us as elected officials at the county. And I know sometimes things may get heated, and we may actually, you know, say some things to each other we don't mean, but we're still a team up here, and I still appreciate being a part of this team. So, I didn't want to let the opportunity pass by. Y'all know I'm a team player. I'm a fool for a team guy. I'm an old athlete. I don't know anything else but team. I didn't play individual sports much. So, I did want to say that piece. I wanted to thank the board on their support of the May 20 date. I think that's something that we can be proud of, that we got right, that the state didn't. Now, we implore them to take, to follow suit and get it right within their ranks as well. Wanted to also mention that, you know, I wanted to talk just a little bit here, and I'm pontificating a little bit, I'm pulling a Commissioner product just a little bit, about our blueprint meetings. When I talked about the level of team, and the way we treat each other during these board meetings, and even the way after these board meetings are over, the way we walk away from them, and leave everything on the field, if I might use that moniker, I don't, I wish I could see the same thing happen at the blueprint level. And I know it's two different dynamics, two different boards, but things there get so messy at times. But I think everybody's coming from a good place. I think everybody there has a good heart. And I'm hoping that as we move into December, that we can fight for what we got to fight for. We can say what we have to say, but again, conduct ourselves the way we conduct ourselves during our meetings here. And again, understanding that everybody has a cause, everybody has something they believe in, everybody has something they're fighting for, but none of us are trying to take each other's head off with arguments. And patience, last thing I'll say is patience for one another. If I am a little bit too amped up on the issue, sorry. It's just my thing on that issue. If I got a lot to say on the issue, that's just my thing on that issue, which I know I'm not, I don't usually talk this much, but I just felt it tonight. I felt a little bit of us needing to have this conversation about the fact that we are a team, we do work together, we are passionate about the things that we believe in, and we fight hard for our districts and the people that we represent. I believe we all have constituencies, particularly constituencies within our districts, except for myself and my better-at-large half, Commissioner Lindley, who is countywide. None of you other, none of the rest of you have to worry about any other districts voting on you. So, you have an agenda that you're bringing forth from your district. But I think each and every one of you does a good job of trying to balance what you want in your district, with what's best countywide. And so, I want to commend each and every one of you, and let you know, I enjoy being on this board. I like the conversation we have. I like how hard we each fight for the things we want. And just for us to walk away remembering that we're a team. And there'll be a point where, after November, this team will never be able to sit in the same room again and have a conversation, because it'll be different. One of us will be gone, and then another will be gone. But we always have this moment that we got to operate as a team. So, again, I told you I was going to pontificate a little bit. It was on my heart. I had to let it off. I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. Thank you for indulging me and the board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Do you have any eligibility left?
Nope. And if I did, I'm not sure I want to run behind this office in line. No offense. But I kind of like, I kind of like being able to move at 40. Man, the way they have the black men out there, I feel sorry for the young men.
Mr. Chairman, drop the mic.
All right, Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the discussion. Going in reverse here, actually, I'm going to save a thought about Commissioner Maddox's comments for a minute. I will try to keep this tight. Commissioner Jackson, excellent comments about our universities and our university presidents. I will say, I appreciate, you know, you putting a few people in the category of being old enough to have kids in college, but I actually do have a future stepson who is at University of North Florida. And I will say that he came home, and after moving into school, and put his mask on when he walked out of our front door, because on campus, that's what you do. And I was just really impressed that he already had that habit after two weeks. Some of our students are taking this seriously. They're still young, but they're taking it seriously. And the university administrators and presidents, they're doing a good job. So, I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Minor, you mentioned the all the emails on masks and everything else. I was reflecting on this, because over the summer, and especially in the last month, I think we've received a handful of emails. And when I say handful, I mean, it could be 56 emails from folks who wanted us to repeal the mandate. And only a couple from those who wanted to keep it. But as always, we don't really hear from everyone until the issue comes up on the agenda. And I think what we saw in the last, in 24 hours, and really the last week, is what we saw in June. Overwhelming support by our community for the measures that are in place that protect public health. And the one thing I would like to add is a huge thank you to the residents of Leon and our business owners. I've talked to some who've said, no matter what happened with the governor's executive order, this was on Friday, before we really understood the implications, they were going to keep masks in place at their business, because their employees wanted to be protected, and their customers wanted to be protected. And the fact that we've not issued one fine or penalty for this since June, it is, it does stand out. We are taking care of each other, and a little play on our wonderful communications team, this is how Leon cares. And just want to appreciate everyone for that. Commissioner Maddox, you and I are almost at 10 years. Can you believe it? It is amazing. And it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve with all of you. I am counting down, celebrating for you, Commissioner Lindley, but a little bit of regret to lose you in a couple, in two more commission meetings. But I do want to say that I appreciate the comments you just made, and I'm not going to belabor this point right now, but I am very troubled by how our blueprint meetings have been working. And I have thought about this before, but I do think it would be in our board's interest, through our inter-local agreement with the city, to reflect on how we structure these meetings. We have so much on our agenda, and when we get back to in-person meetings, citizens are going to want to talk about a lot of things. If we had one meeting focused on economic development, and one meeting focused on infrastructure, we may actually have more constructive conversations, because it's just a little more time for each of those two important subjects. And I would, I was going to save this for a later time, but I would very much like for our board to reflect on that in the future. I'll bring it up again at some point. I just wanted to toss it out there now, because I think the stress of how much we have to get through in a meeting can contribute to the tone sometimes, because we're, just like today, it's a very long meeting, but I'll just leave it there. So, I appreciate your thoughts, and I'd love to look for ways to help improve. So, with that, two very quick things, I hope, Mr. Chair. First, I mentioned the Southwood DRI. We have one public hearing on the Sixth Amendment, and we just approved on consent a public hearing for the Seventh Amendment for December. There's been a lot of different moving pieces with the Southwood DRI in recent years. And Madam County Attorney, I know that the public hearings are quasi-judicial, and so I don't want to get into any territory, I know this is a public meeting, but I don't want to get into any territory that I shouldn't at this moment. So, please check me if I start to slip that way. One of the things that was referenced in the Seventh Amendment was the stormwater update that the city's been working on for a while, and I've heard from constituents a number of times. We've asked questions of the city about this, county administrator has on our behalf. And I still don't have clarity on where we are on the stormwater master plan. So, Ms. County Administrator, I know that that will probably come up as part of the public hearing, but if we can get an update provided to us on that issue at some point soon, I would appreciate that. Do you need a motion for that? It can come as an email. It doesn't need to be an agenda item.
No, we'll take care of that.
Thank you. And the last thing is, I referenced this earlier, unless the governor extends the executive order allowing for virtual meetings, we will be back in chambers on October 13. And we have not talked about how that meeting would be structured since a very early agenda item. I want to say, Ms. County Administrator, help me out here. I think it was April or May, when we were talking about how we might do this, thinking we might be back in chambers earlier than now. And I just wondered if we needed to address any of those issues tonight, because we very well might not meet before we're back in chambers. And the one thing that was standing out in my mind from that item, again, it was many months ago, was perhaps having some social distance among the seven of us, or normally there would be nine of us on the dais. This is an interesting timing, because, Commissioner Maddox, you referenced, you know, the collegiality of our board, and Mr. Chair, you referenced my comment earlier of getting back in chambers was going to be nice. I find a lot of value in sitting on the dais and being able to see all of you during that discussion, and to be able to see our constituents when they're speaking to us from the podium. I also want to recognize that October 13, we have a comp plan hearing. So, our city colleagues are going to join us. So, Mr. County Administrator, I'm wondering if there's any direction from the board you might need, and if we could have separations, the plexiglass is the most ubiquitous thing right now, but any way to accommodate all of us on the dais, so that we can really get right back to that conversation we've all celebrated in the past. Any directions?
In short, I don't think, we don't need any direction for that. I hear what you're saying about all of you on the dais. We do have plans in place that might require with a number of people to have us more spread out than that, but we do have plans in place. And if we're back in physical meetings, like we assume we will be, we'll put those in place, and try to still maximize the environment the best we can.
Okay, well, let me be a little more direct.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Dozier, just on point to that.
Yeah, Commissioner Maddox?
We have to, as, if he doesn't extend, we have to, as a board, meet in the same chamber. Like, for instance, it can't be a quorum in there, and some of us, let's say, sitting in our offices or somewhere like that.
Why don't you let the county attorney interpret that for us?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Commissioners, you would be required to have a quorum for your meeting. If the board wanted to, it would have to amend the current board policy about people being able to attend telephonically or otherwise, and still participate and vote, because under the board policy, currently, someone who plans to be absent, a commissioner has to bring that up at a regularly-scheduled meeting, broach that topic, confirm that the rest of the commission is okay with that person appearing telephonically or otherwise. But that's certainly within the discretion of the board to do that. All the board needs is a physical quorum.
And just, if I can, Mr. Chairman, however, we have made accommodations that we will be able to both distance and fit everyone in the room, even with the city, should we need to do that. Our county engineers have come in very handy in this process, and we do have the ability to do that, unless the board would like to give us the direction to do something different, and allow commissioners to do, as the county attorney said, and as long as we have a quorum, to allow some of you to do so remotely, certainly you could give us that direction. But I'm just letting you know that we can accommodate everyone in the chambers with physical distancing, and it may require us to, it will require us to shuttle citizens in from different areas, but that, we've done that in the past, it would just require more facilitation there.
Mr. Chairman, on point. It sounds like Vince is trying for us to go down to the fairground and have dinner with that meeting. And I'm clear, I'm clear that I'm hearing him say, if we could meet at the fairground and build and be, and stretch out, and have a good cooking and all like that. That's what I heard. I'm translating, interpreting what I heard him say. Thank you.
What about the bathrooms there?
There are no bathrooms down there, though, are there?
Well, I wanted you all to see that firsthand, exactly.
Not that we take a break.
It's late, yeah. Commissioner Dozier, I didn't mean to run you over there. Are you finished?
No, sir, I'm not. I'm not.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the comments here. Ms. County Administrator, I appreciate the comments. I would not be in favor of having a call-in option unless one of us needed to be out of chambers. Let me be more clear. We have been six months without a lot of real-time comment from constituents. We have, these virtual meetings have not been easy. From my perspective, and I don't think I'm the only one, having the commissioners sit together on the dais, equal footing, and in dialogue with each other, is a value added. And so, Mr. County Administrator, what I didn't hear from you was any specifics about where we might be sitting, and I understand we can accommodate all 12 of us. The reason why I bring this up is I wanted to know if you had plans to put five of us on the dais and two of us someplace else.
Yes.
And that is a challenging thing for me to wrap my mind around, how we are going to structure that conversation. And I am really, really frustrated to get back to something where we're not interrupted by procedural things, and who's saying what and when. We have done that for six months. We need to make this as simple as possible and straightforward as possible, and the only thing I could think of is being on the dais. So, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'm not hearing any concerns from my colleagues on that part, but I didn't anticipate this conversation going in this direction. I thought we might get a little more detail, so I don't mean to make this a challenge. It's just...
Go ahead. You want to weigh in?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
You guys have it.
Commissioner Dozier, if, and I'm hearing what you're saying, and certainly, if the board is not comfortable with spreading out further than that, then certainly adding plexiglass and that sort of thing is something that we can do in anticipation of the meeting. You never quite know. That may have been something that made people more uncomfortable. So, I wanted to just make sure that we got some direction from you. We were planning on doing a distancing and accommodate everyone, but if the preference would be to utilize plexiglass and get you closer together, we're very happy to do that as well.
Unless my colleagues have any concerns on this point, I will just say that I truly wish we had gotten an update on what we were going to do in advance of the meeting. We kind of knew this might come in October, and been able to reflect on that. It might be fine just to say, and I'm sure your team, they always do a great job. I saw what was described as the launch control station in the chambers the other day to manage the public comment today. I mean, the staff has done a great job working through a lot of these issues. I don't mean to second-guess them. It's just that we've been left with no information since earlier this year, and it would be good to know how we're managing this meeting, instead of learning about it on the 13th. So, again, if there's no other comments, I will leave it with, please provide us with an update before the 13th, so we're not figuring it out in real time as... an update before the 13th so we're not figuring it out in real time as we've done with the virtual meetings. Is that possible?
Sure, we'll send you an email on it.
Does that work? Okay.
Not exactly, but we'll accept it for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Commissioner, is that it, Commissioner Dozier?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm confused by what just happened, but that's fine. I'll, I'll talk to the county administrator about it offline, so good.
We're happy to.
For a lot of stuff here. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm going to miss you all too and I can't wait to get back into the chambers, however the seating chart turns out to be, and I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Dozier. I want that camaraderie also, as safely as possible. I guess we could all wear our mask throughout the whole meetings too. Anyway, I'll look forward to that solution coming forward. One thing that I kind of feel a little badly about tonight, I was really, the way the youth sports issue came forward, I found myself, I wasn't really ready to support that, with all due respect to all of the rest of you who found a way, but I ended up then not being able to support staying in stage two, which I totally support because I think the two were sort of packed together. But I'm really glad that we had the wherewithal as a commission to stick to our guns and as Commissioner Proctor said, not drop our guard as best we can and while trying to acknowledge the community and the needs of so many people. I also wanted to thank all the people who have been writing in, in support of the mask ordinance because honestly, for weeks and weeks, we really hadn't heard very much from anyone who felt like it was wise, even though early on we did. So that was great. I think as several of you have said, you just cannot imagine how much we all do need and rely on the messages we get from the community all the time. And we do read them and we do listen and I appreciate that very much. The only business I have is that I have a request to have a proclamation observing October as Guardianship Awareness Month, and that is an effort to try to educate people more on how guardianship programs work for elders, people with disabilities and other, whether it's through a court-appointed or a family member or a legal guardian looking after the needs of people who can't look out for themselves. And so that is a national month in October and if you all would agree, I'd like to have a proclamation arranged for that organization.
Got a second from Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Aye? Easy, yep.
And just one last thing, I just always appreciated Commissioner Maddox's teamwork. I remember that was one of the first things I noticed when I came on this board eight years ago. You were chairman and I appreciated your, the way you treated us as a team and I think to Commissioner Dozier's comments earlier, we are a team and I think we are all looking out for the best interests of our county respectfully for each other, though sometimes, yeah, we get a little, a little at odds on specifics and, but I, I am very proud to be a part of this county commission, with this county staff. And I love you guys all and I'm going to miss you dearly and just I'm so grateful for this time we've had together. Anybody got that? Carol Burnett? That's all. Thanks very much.
That it, Commissioner Lindley?
Yes, sir.
We, you will be missed, absolutely. You're not, you're not finished yet though. We've got some more time, so. Commissioner Proctor.
Again, I want to emphasize to our staff, my thanks for the Woodville Sewer Lines, the work there, incredible, long, long, long in coming. Thank you. I want to thank also citizens for the 576 families that we fed on Farm Share on Saturday before last. Want to announce that the next Farm Share is October 24th, a Saturday. That is going to be at the Gene Cox Stadium. Farm Share is coming to that stadium on that Saturday. Also, commissioners, I've written you today, you should have received a letter which I sent to the mayor and you may have received a letter which I forwarded to you last week, sent to the county commission and city commission. And I've tried to advantage your thoughts with reasons why I believe that Tallahassee and Leon County Children's Agency is worth our contemplation in the days ahead. Want to remind all citizens that early voting begins on Monday, October the 19th through November the 1st, and that includes the Sunday of the 25th and it includes, but it will not include the Sunday. Yes, it will include the Sunday, right before, take your souls to the pole, right before Tuesday on the 3rd. Those things being said, I thank you all for suffering me and I realize that I'm that team player who, Dennis Rotman and all, but I thank you all for, for suffering me anyway. That being said, y'all have a good night. Thank you.
And that, I think, is the end of the night. Am I right? Any other business need to come before us? Love you guys. Talk to you soon. Thank you for your patience. Have a wonderful evening. Night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.